Members, are you happy with the order of the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. We have presentations to the board or persons of delegations 20-3-1B. This is a recognition by the Board of Trustees of the District and College Classified Employees of the Year and selection of nominations that will be forwarded to the State Chancellor's Office. We do this on an annual basis. It's our Academy Awards for classified. I'm excited to do this. This award honors Community College Classified Employees who demonstrate the highest level of commitment to professionalism and community colleges. Each of the colleges and the district office were invited to nominate one classified employee and each will be honored by the board tonight. Each Community College District may forward the information of one nominee to the California Community College Chancellor's Office for consideration of a statewide award. That nominee is selected by the board and will be announced at the end of this presentation. I'm going to ask interim President Jackson, I hope you're out there somewhere, to introduce the nominee from Skyline College. President Jackson? I guess she's not there. The nominee from Skyline College was Gina Chardella Palmer. Oh, here's her picture. She's a nominee from Skyline College. How about Acting President Lopez? Are you here from CSM?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Would you like to introduce your nominee?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much.
Words, thank you.
President's words. I'd like to say good evening to our Board of Trustees, Interim Chancellor Claire, President Jackson, President Moore, and all of the 103 participants that are joining us tonight. I am excited to introduce to you Karen Chadwick. Karen has been at the College of San Mateo for 23 years and is currently serving as a financial aid technician for us. Karen Chadwick works tirelessly to support the educational goals of our students by ensuring that they can access federal, state, and scholarship funds that they are eligible for. She goes above and beyond to help first-generation college students complete the daunting task of applying for financial aid. Karen works in collaboration with many support programs and learning communities throughout our campus. She coordinates financial aid and scholarship workshops with programs such as EOPS, the Multicultural Center, The Dream Center, Promise Scholars, DRC, Project Change, MONA, Umoja, and the CSM Athletics. Karen really understands the importance of providing access to all of our students who are seeking higher education. She has also successfully coordinated the CSM Scholarship Committee for 11 years. Karen's ability to communicate with the San Mateo Community College Foundation, our donors, staff, and students, has ensured that CSM has given out an increasing number of scholarships each year. She also is a key participant in the following committees: EOPS Advisory, MONA Advisory, Student Services Council, and the CSCA Executive Board. In addition, she performs outreach at our local high schools from South San Francisco to East Palo Alto. She is known for her enthusiastic and informative Cash for College presentations. In fact, many high school counselors request Karen as a presenter because she makes what could be a daunting topic of financial aid and funding your education fun and easy to understand. She's also involved in her community. She helps fundraise for her stepson's baseball team. She provides countless hours organizing raffles, coordinating the community snack shop, and assisting with the annual pancake breakfast. The funds raised through these events help pay for young boys and girls to be able to participate on the team. Without these funds, these young children would not be able to join the team. Karen's dedication to the students continues far beyond their community college experience. Former College of San Mateo graduates have contacted Karen, seeking advice and help with their financial aid application and award status at the four-year universities they're attending. They've been told that no one will help them. They've told Karen that no one helps them like she does. Karen continues to help the students and answers the call well after she completes a full day of work and even takes calls throughout the weekend. In closing, Karen is an integral member of the CSM community. She understands the mission of our college and makes sure that students from all backgrounds are able to reach their goal, goals. She helps students overcome whatever barriers they are faced with because she believes higher education should be available to everyone. And I'd like to say that Karen, if I was in person right now, I would be presenting you with a huge bouquet of flowers. And so I want to let you know that as soon as I get a chance to see you, I'm going to present you with those flowers, whenever that day is.
Thank you, President Lopez. Wonderful recognition. And Karen, if you're out there, we are so proud that you are nominated for this wonderful award. Now I will ask President Moore, if she's out there, to introduce her nominee from Kenyatta College. President Moore?
She's out there. I think she's just being switched over.
Okay.
If you want, Karen, you want to just move to the district office? Because I know Jose's there. He could talk.
Okay. I will ask, that's a good idea. Let's ask Vice Chancellor Nunes to introduce the nominee from the district office.
It is my, hold on, I'm there. Right here. It is President Schwartz, members of the board, executive staff, members of the public. It is indeed my true honor and privilege to nominate John Cuevas. John Cuevas is the lead groundskeeper over at CSM. Correction, Kenyatta College. He's been with us for about eight years. John realizes and actively contributes to student success by ensuring that he and his team maintain the ground of Kenyatta College impeccably. John has made the connection that an aesthetically beautiful learning and working environment contributes to the health, well-being, productivity, and success of our campus community. John consistently exemplifies the goals and values articulated in the mission statement of the California Community Colleges. Kenyatta College and our Facilities mantra of facilities excellence through customer service, teamwork, communication, and professionalism. John joined the district about eight years ago and endlessly embraced, excuse me, opportunities to support student success by contributing in meaningful ways, broadening his skill set, leading his team with vigor, and endeavoring to support our community college. John's greatest strength is the value he places in his team. John is a strong leader who supports and encourages his team to be successful in the work that they do. John sets clear expectations and holds others accountable to meet those expectations, resulting in highly positive outcomes. In addition, John leads by example and works side-by-side his team every day. He includes his team in all aspects of problem-solving and decision-making. John regularly shares the vision for the campus landscape and asks his team for their input and overall operation that can be improved. John is trusted and well-respected by his peers, not just in Kenyatta College, but of course, the three colleges, as well as the college staff. He is considered a family member there at Kenyatta College. John actively engages in staff development, routinely participates in training with his groundskeepers. He is known for fostering the feeling of essential relevance and pride in the team's contribution to our organization. He acknowledges strong performance, offers guidance and direction, takes good care of his people in return, expects dedicated, strong, and high performance. One last thing, I need to mention that John has served as the ASME Union President for the past several years. During this time, John has demonstrated strong leadership and partnership with management. This work as president requires late nights, long phone calls, continuous learning, and always being available to help union members work well with the management team. This work is all voluntary and, which includes night and day and weekends, and it's, and one last thing I want to share. Right here, on a personal note. Lost it.
We can hear you.
I understand, but I lost my notes. Just please.
Oh, wait.
Oh, yeah. And then finally, John is a family man. He has four kids, two grandchildren. He's a die-hard Raiders fan. He's been taking up bowling with his teenage son. He loves cleaning vehicle and on the weekends he does detail cars, loves to work in his backyard. He runs and works out at the gym. He is really a true team player, family man, and dedicated employer, employee of the district as well as Kenyatta College. That concludes my remarks. Strongly recommend John.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, John, for getting nominated for this prestigious award. I do know that President Jackson is having connection problems and I think.
President Moore should be there.
Can you hear me?
Oh, President Moore, are you here to represent? Yes, very good. Would you like to introduce your candidate from Kenyatta College?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Board President Schwartz, Vice President Norris, interim Chancellor Claire, members of, and faculty and staff and classified individuals, as well as my fellow CEO colleagues. I would like to introduce you two, Kenyatta College Classified Employee of the Year, Brian Horowitz. Brian has lived the student-first philosophy of the district before the term was ever coined in our district strategic plan. As the very first recipient of the SMCCD Board of Trustees Above and Beyond Award, Brian was recognized for going above and beyond when he located and then sent academic materials to a soldier stationed in Iraq during Operation Desert Storm, who was not a student at our college. When the student reached out, desperate to find anyone who would help him with textbooks for his classes, Brian was honored. He struggled to figure out why, as his actions were simply second nature to him. Brian has served at Kenyatta College as a bookstore operations assistant for 23 years. In his years of exemplary service, Brian has helped tens of thousands of students find their way at Kenyatta College. If you were to ask students and staff at Kenyatta College about Brian, you would hear words like helpful, caring, compassionate, problem solver, supportive, trainer, diligent, and honest, just to name a few. Brian has supported the efforts at Kenyatta College Bookstore as the textbook rental program, the first of its kind in the district and in the state of California, was created and flourished. The program allowed students to rent textbooks for a fraction of their retail. The National Association Awards Innovation Achievement Award winner in 2006, the textbook rental program became a model for bookstores across the country. Brian, working alongside his manager Jay Kumar, was there every step of the way in creating and supporting the rollout and growth of this program. Brian was also instrumental in the development and rollout of the Brown Bag Program, also recognized by the District Board of Trustees in 2019 with an Above and Beyond Award that provided low, no-cost meal auctions for students. That program gave rise to the food insecurity pilot, running now district-wide and seeded by the Board of Trustees with a $1 million grant to support students who struggle with food insecurity. Brian is an excellent trainer. Brian has mentored hundreds, if not thousands, of student assistants over the years. A number of the student assistants who worked with Brian as their mentor now serve as permanent classified employees in the district. Students, student assistants play a valued role in the operation of the bookstores. Brian is quick to recognize the talents of our students in the workplace, and he continually challenges them by placing trust in them to perform meaningful and sometimes complex work. Students often rise to the challenge because Brian has taken them. If you were to talk to the number of students that Brian has mentored, you would hear many of them speak of Brian as a father figure. Brian takes part in all college and district activities and is always the first to volunteer his time, energy, and talents to helping support events that promote the college and support its staff. From volunteering at Arts and Olives to working side-by-side with bookstore manager Jay Kumar, preparing and serving a holiday meal for the entire college staff, Brian never shies away from an opportunity to be of service. As a member of CSCA, Brian was often involved in supporting his fellow employees, and he gave good counsel to staff and union leaders over the years. He has served on numerous hiring committees. Brian was chosen to serve on so many hiring committees because of his ability to spot talent. Brian is a very private person. Most people did not know that Brian's beloved wife Linda was diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's over 10 years ago. Brian managed to care for his wife at home, all the while never missing a beat at work. He told very few people about the challenges he faced at home and did not want anyone to go out of their way to help him. As Linda's condition worsened, Brian had to face incredibly difficult decision of admitting his wife to a facility where she couldn't be cared for around the clock. This was an agonizing situation for Brian, decision for Brian to make. In true Brian fashion, excuse me, he did not let his challenge interfere with his work and managed to be a diligent advocate for Linda as well as the students and staff of the district. Brian worked every day and saw his wife every day for years. While Brian did eventually let a few more people into, understand his struggles he was facing, most did not know what Brian was going through. His manner at work was every bit as helpful and cheerful as it ever is despite the pain he was feeling. Brian is such a diligent advocate for Linda, other families in the facility where Linda now lives begin to rely on him for counsel and support as they struggle with the loved ones deterioration in the face of such a debilitating and cruel disease. So in addition to his role as Kenyatta College and his role caring for his wife, Brian became a caregiver for others. He formed relationships with doctors, nurses, staff, patients, and their families at Rortol Village in Menlo Park, and he soon became someone that all of those groups rely upon, all the while supporting his wife and serving at it as an exemplary part of the Kenyatta College team. Brian with, with, excuse me, Brian with their own version of our district's Above and Beyond Award also received award from Rortol Village, and soon afterward Catholic Charities bestowed its Volunteer of the Year award to Brian in 2017 for the work he was doing to support patients and their families in the face of this disease, again, all the while supporting his wife and never missing a beat at Kenyatta College. Brian is a selfless man who has spent his life helping others, whether it is the thousands of lives he touched at Kenyatta College, the people who crossed his path facing incredibly difficult circumstances with a loved one. Brian is there for all of them, and that is why he's our Classified Employee of the Year. I'd like to just once again congratulate Brian Horowitz. And if I were there, I would be, if we were there in person, Brian, we'd be handing you flowers. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, and congratulations, Brian, for being nominated for this prestigious award. And I understand Dr. Jackson has joined us?
Yes, I thank you very much, President Schwartz. I was on, but I was muted, and it's kind of hard with this new technology to get used to all the buttons you have to push. But I wanted to say first of all, good evening to the board, interim chancellor chair, my fellow CEOs and colleagues. As you indicated previously, President Schwartz, this award has several criteria which guide our nominations, and it really is a daunting task for the board to make a selection because I think all of the nominees should be spotted. But when we were going through and making our nominations, one of the things that we looked at was the commitment to the vision of success for California Community Colleges and the district's mission, commitment to high standards and job performance, and commitment to serving the institution through participation, excuse me, in professional and community activities. So it is my distinct honor to notify you that our candidate from Skyline College is Gina Chardella Palmer. Gina checks all the boxes. She is the Program Services Coordinator for the Veterans Resource Center at Skyline, and I will try to summarize three pages of text into a five-minute summary. She initiated cross-departmental collaborations by working with academic counseling and the Disability Resources Center to give support services for veterans in the VRC. The VRC is a special area on campus where veterans feel more included and they also feel part of the campus community. She implemented a VA work-study program in the VRC where students serve as mentors and provide front desk app and support. She coordinated and hosted a district-wide professional development for veteran counselors, certifying officials, and support staff, and she secured an outside facilitator and a known leader in veterans affairs from American River College, who showcased best practices and techniques for processing veterans and their families to ensure they feel welcome in a college environment. She applied for and was awarded competitive grants from the State Chancellor's Office to upgrade the VRC space with furniture that allows for flexible work, study, and lounge spaces. She also added two private office spaces which allow for private and confidential support for our veterans. And she oversaw all of this from concept design to implementation. And we held our open house in the fall of 2019 after our Veterans Day ceremony. It was an amazing space. There's a saying, if you build it, they will come. And come they did. Under her leadership, the veterans population has continued to increase. Despite overall declining enrollment, course success, and especially for our historically underperforming population of Latinx and African-American students, has grown. Additionally, our sometime-forgotten female veterans population has also grown and has become active not only in our Veterans Resource Center, but throughout the campus community. In providing a better support for our veterans, Gina knew it was key to partner with and collaborate with external organizations. A few that I will just mention, she was instrumental in getting San Mateo County to host the Vietnam Moving Memorial Wall. She established a partnership with San Mateo County Veteran Services Office, which now provides monthly outreach visits where a veteran service officer conducts one-on-one drop-ins to file service-connected disability claims for our students. She established the Student Veterans of America Organization or SVA chapter on campus. This has resulted in Skyline College being recognized regionally, at the state level, and nationally. In fact, we were asked to present at the national conference where Skyline's VRC was recognized as a model for two-year colleges looking to start or grow their own chapters. Our veteran students have affectionately named Gina their Vet Mom, which she accepts with pride. The veteran students enthusiastically say that Gina has created an atmosphere of family, support, and trust, things that are near and dear to them, and also has allowed them to succeed as students, and we at the college agree with that assessment. In conclusion, we enthusiastically support Gina Chardella Palmer as Skyline's nominee as the Classified Employee of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And Gina, again, congratulations for being nominated for this prestigious, we feel a very prestigious award. So we've had all four nominations sent to the board previously, and without knowing who anybody was, without these personal recommendations, and we cast our vote. And if I was here, I would do a room, if we had a room call, I would say the nomination that will be forwarded to the State Chancellor's Office will be Brian Horowitz. Congratulations, Brian.
Yay!
Yay! I hope the board will indulge me, but my idea was that since we cannot do this in person, that we will have a certificate, and I think there's a little monetary thing that companies have given to you, Brian. And at the same time, let's, let's include those flowers. I don't know if people can read the chats, but I was looking at them a little bit, and there's so many congratulations to all of our candidates, so hopefully you can read those yourselves. Brian, if you're out there, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I thought it might help you read.
Somebody needs, somebody needs to mute, please.
Well, I want to.
Hello, hello? Okay, thank you. And again, congratulations, Brian.
And can board members say a few words?
Dave, you're back on.
Yeah, can board members say a few words?
Yes, please. Board members, please say a few words. Somebody needs to mute their phones.
Yes, well, I'll try and speak over whoever's not hearing, but I just want to say, like, every year this gets harder and harder. We get outstanding nominations, and this year I thought was particularly tough because we had four incredible nominations, and you see these things without any names attached, so you don't know who the people are, and you read about what they've done, both on the job and off the job. It's just, it's absolutely incredible, and it was so hard to make a choice this year, I found at least. It was very, very difficult. Congratulating all of our four nominees. You're all terrific people, and extra congratulations to Brian, and we're so pleased to put your name forward to the state as our Classified Employee of the Year nominee, and we wish you the best at the state competition.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Malaver. Can you wait a minute, please?
Hi, this is Brian Horowitz.
Hi, Brian. Congratulations.
Can I say a few words?
Please do.
I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Trustees for this special honor and congratulate the other recipients of the Classified Employee of the Year award.
But.
It's a special feeling being able to represent. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It's a special feeling being able to represent our district, and I'm extremely grateful. Kenyatta College is a real part of my extended family, and I think each one of the employees for believing in me. A special thanks goes out to Jay Kumar, Vice Chancellor Tom Moore, and President Moore from Kenyatta. This award truly touches my heart in the deepest way, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Brian. We congratulate you so much. Any other board members wish to raise your congratulations at this time?
I would like to say something.
Thank you, Cirilla.
Yeah. So I had the honor of actually notifying all of the four recipients of their nomination, and we, I sent it literally in almost the middle of the night, thinking that, you know, they might think it was all of a, like a hoax or like a spam email, because I was trying to word how to say, "Congratulations on your nomination," and I didn't want anybody to think, oh, it's automatically junk email. So what I did was I tried to be a little more personable and reach out to them, and I received nothing but great responses from these four individuals. They were all amazing to get to know, to get to talk to, to get to interact with. And, you know, I'm relatively still new, but I hope to aspire to reach any of their levels one day in my five years here, you know, and I can eventually be nominated too. But I am, I'm in awe of all four of them, and I wish them all best in their careers, and congratulations to each one, and especially to Brian for moving on.
Very good. Thank you. And again, Brian, thank you from us. Trustee Oliver.
Well, just adding my congratulations to Brian and to all four. And while it's hard to do this through, you know, this kind of Zoom conference call, I'm glad we're doing this. You know, you all deserve the recognition, and it's great to forward Brian's name, you know, to the statewide organization. It's always been among our better moments in the course of our board meetings each year, when we get to do this in person, and just the feeling of happiness, the feeling of congratulation, you know, the accolades are so much more strongly felt or hard, you know, you can feel it more when we're all together. So please don't, don't feel it any less. It's a great recognition for all four of you, so congratulations.
Thank you, Brian. Any other board members wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. Madam President, I too would like to commend Brian and all of the candidates. I would echo what my colleagues have previously said. It was a very difficult choice because everyone is really exemplary, and I think if we were to go down the district, we would probably find even more people that step up and help, and I think that's kind of like the hallmark of where we want to be always. And I wish Brian all the best to see most forward as well as a candidate on a statewide basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, again, thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for being such a wonderful employee and everything that you do in your own private life is to be strongly commended. I'm going to move on with the agenda, if that's agreeable to everyone. We are now at 20-3-2B, Contemporary Conversation Regarding Race, Class, Gender, Privilege, and Equity. We are not going to have a report on this tonight. It has taken everything that the district has, we could do to put this together for us to have this board meeting, but it is an opportunity for me to say thank you to everyone concerned to get us all together via video. to get us all together via video that we can have this board meeting. And we will not be having this report. And I just continually will ask for your patience as we get through the agenda. It's a first time for us. I think we'll get better and better as we go along, but we hope we don't have to do it quite as confined in the future. But it is what it is, and we will continue on with that.
Okay, I do have a statement if I can regarding that. Yeah, so not necessarily, you know, on the contemporary conversation. I know we don't have a topic. But just to, you know, for not just the board, but our campuses and our community, to let our community know that we continue to do this work that we're doing as we respond to COVID-19. We do so through a lens of equity. We do so with the lens of understanding, checking our privilege, that there are families out there that do work on traditional jobs, where they do have to go to work despite, you know, having the quarantine or having the government say you can't work and you have to be at home. There are workers that are putting their, you know, their lives on the line, actually, in reality, to make a living for their families. We understand that. We understand that there are students that are, you know, working, trying to do their homework at home and their classwork at home, compartmentalizing with family responsibilities, the family responsibilities that they had prior to this current situation. But now they're doing so with the added responsibility of learning online. So just to, for the community to understand that that's the lens that we're trying to do the work that we're doing. We understand that these are short-term responses to this emergency that we're in. But as we continue to transition to long-term responses that we are understanding, and I want us to make sure that we also commit, make sure that we're recommitted to ensuring that every response that we have is not as detrimental to those communities, not just our housing vulnerable, our food insecure, and our families that don't have the luxury that many of us enjoy. So I just wanted to make sure that we keep that in mind as we not just go through this meeting tonight, but as we continue to respond to this COVID-19 issue.
Thank you.
Could I...
Oliver, I can see you'd like to speak.
Add or echo and add. We are in extraordinary times. What I think we are seeing is all of the inequity, and I'm thinking economic inequity, but other inequity, amplified because of what's happening in America right now. Just to look at a couple of examples, the lowest-paid quartile, so bottom 25% of American workers, within that category, only 9% have jobs that they can actually perform from home. When you work your way up, and this is Bureau of Labor Statistics, at the top quartile, it's 62% that can have a job, they can work from home. So this is really exaggerating, magnifying all the economic inequity that exists in our society. And of course, lower-paid workers are the least likely to have any kind of benefits, health benefits or other kind of paid leave benefits. So they're under much more distress. It's, I think, a good moment. I don't know all the details of what the Congress is doing, but they're at least recognizing in the short term that this is extraordinary. But it is a short-term form of relief they'll be providing, where we need to really, you know, look at these inequities and address them long-term. But that's not going to happen because right at this moment, they're only looking, you know, how do we get through the next few months? But it's a potential disaster for tens of millions of people.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready to move on from statements from executives and student representatives? Interim Chancellor Claire, you'd like to make a statement?
Sure, and I'll keep it brief. And I appreciate the comments by trustee Goodman and trustee Oliver. And I know they reflect the values of the board. And those frankly are the values that we're struggling to keep as we respond to this unprecedented situation. I want to thank, I know there's a lot of people on tonight. I just want to thank really the heroic efforts of our faculty, our classified staff, our administrators. We are doing everything we can to serve our students and continue to operate under just extraordinary conditions. So I'll be sharing an update with you in terms of where we're at a little bit later tonight, but I do want to thank everybody. For those that are on this webcast, thank you. This is, we're making history tonight, and it's a little bumpy, but we'll get better and better with this as we go. And I think we're going to probably be in this mode for a while. And then finally, before I turn it over to others, I do want to, first of all, sincerely congratulate all of the Classified Employees of the Year at each. I know every year, it's an impossible decision to make. President Schwartz and the board, if it's okay with you, I think when we're actually back in the same room at the same time, we ought to have a little something for this group. And, you know, that'll obviously be up to the board, but I think it would be nice to be able to recognize folks with their families and friends and coworkers. So that's just something for us to think about when better times are ahead. And especially, I want to congratulate Brian. I know that you'll be going off in a, you know, in a bigger pool with the entire state, but you've done amazing things, so congratulations. And those conclude my remarks. And I suppose I can turn it over to the presidents, if their mics are on, if they have anything significant to report.
I don't have anything to report.
Thanks, so. Next. Okay, okay.
This is...
And I know Chief Financial...
I wish to say congratulations to Brian Resilience during this interesting time. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian. And really, congratulations to all the candidates because they represent the best of the best at each of our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, and I echo my colleagues. I also wanted to congratulate Brian and all other candidates. And I also wanted to extend tremendous thanks for all the faculty as well as staff who have been helping out to, for all this stuff in this district to make all of this happen and help our students to succeed during this semester and even beyond in those amazing circumstances that we're all functioning right now.
And I think, hopefully, I have District Academic Senate President Wallace on the line.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, just, yeah, just want to, I think most of my comments will probably come up during the COVID response discussion item. But I also want to give a shout out to all my faculty colleagues for the huge, huge lift that they have been asked to undergo as part of this transition to online learning. It's been extremely challenging, and the faculty have definitely risen to the occasion. I think, you know, just, I think the beginning of the Zoom meetings are pretty good illustration of how difficult it is to transition to online synchronous learning. No offense. And then I also want to give a shout out to the students. Like, I'm hearing from colleagues all over the district that the students are showing up, they're doing their work, they're being resilient, they're hustling, and they're just being, you know, the awesome students that we have in this district. So, yeah, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, District Academic Senate President Wallace. And President Schwartz, that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have on the agenda to invite any union representatives, if they would like to do any updates. Anybody from AFT out there? CSCE? And Asmi? Well, thank you. Chris Wiedman from CSCE. Good to hear from you.
Just a reminder, make sure you have your phones or your devices muted. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else who'd like to make a statement at this time from the non-representative groups? Tom Nouris, you have two pictures on now. I wonder what...
I lost all of my candidacy. And so I just rejoined the meeting, so I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
Okay. We'll continue on, I think. Statements from the public on non-agenda items. Are there anybody from the public who would like to speak at this time? Members of the public who are participating in Zoom should use the raise hand function in the bottom right corner of the screen. Members will be called upon to speak. Now, all you have to do is tell this board president where I see that. Oh, look at you. You're right there. Okay. John?
Hi, this is John Pimentel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to acknowledge that the district is going through incredible tumult right now. And I tip my hat to all the work that the team has done at the trustees, the administration, the faculty, and the certified, the classified staff. And despite all of that disruption, you've been able to now achieve true public disclosure of these meetings through the Zoom platform. And I just wanted to commend the staff for taking that significant step. I think trustee Mandelkern was correct. This is a historic moment on many levels, the least of which, by the way, is the fact that we're now publicly transmitting these meetings. And I've written a few letters on this, and I wanted to say thank you very much to the trustees for taking this step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the public?
All right. You had a request, I believe, from someone named Michael, who had a comment they wanted to make.
Yes.
Okay, I see your name, Michael. Okay.
Do you hear me?
Do, loud and clear.
Thank you very much. District Strategic Plans emphatically states students first. As a community member, I want to congratulate all those selected as Employee of the Year. They truly represent students first. Academic success, equity, and justice are primary goals. During the pandemic, it is essential to remove barriers students face in their quest for education so that they have hope for a brighter future. Later, we will hear an update on the district's COVID-19 response. The district is no doubt doing all it can to prevent the spread of the virus by moving instruction online. And should be commended for its efforts to protect the district's students in the San Mateo County from infection. In better times, not only do we express great concern for students' academic lives, but also for their social and emotional well-being. Many come from marginalized communities, working families, surviving paycheck-to-paycheck and minimum-wage jobs. Pre-pandemic challenges with food and housing insecurity will now be exacerbated. Income inequality, racial inequity, and socioeconomic disparities in technology will be amplified with shelter in place, especially when people lose their jobs. If we truly believe in students first, let's put our money where our mouth is. I assume trustees are in a better financial position than students, CSCE employees, and part-time faculty. As trustees are paid for the service, it would be a great example of civic altruism to voluntarily donate board salaries, totally about $120,000, to a student emergency fund. Students first. Perhaps your generosity will serve as a role model for other district employees. Transparent California indicated that in 2018, there were 19 administrators making over $200,000. If each contributor is 50%, that would total $680,000. In addition, in 2018, 31 staff had salaries between $150,000 and $199,000. If each gave 10%, the fund would increase by another $570. I'm sure many people in our marginalized communities, the constituents we care so much about, would benefit from such generosity. The Santa Hoptick Executive Director of the Equity Institute criticized faculty and staff at Skyline for focusing on first-world problems. Don't focus on your salary during this emergency. People less fortunate are suffering. Trustees, there is no virtue in using taxpayer dollars to overcompensate highly-paid administrators. Churchill said, "Never let the good crisis go to waste." It's time to make the phrase "students first" more than a slogan. Please put our economically disadvantaged and disproportionately impacted students first during this unprecedented pandemic. Reallocate the district's revenue of $245 million, 84% of which comes from local property taxes, to essential services, eliminate wasteful spending, and return to our core mission, educating students. Please put our money where your mouth is. Students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who would like to speak under non-agenda items?
Is it proper to make a comment?
We never do, so it's not any different.
We don't make comments? Well, I was curious, so I looked up my stipend, and I multiplied it by the five of us. For the record, annual is $47,640 that the five trustees are paid. So that is the correct number.
Thank you. That's a nice clarification, trustee Oliver. Thank you very much. Okay, are we ready to move to new business? 20-3-2A, Approval of Personnel Items, Changes Assignment, Compensation, Placement, Leave, Staff allocations, Classification of Academic and Classified Personnel.
Move approval.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this question? Hearing none, I'm going to call for board discussion. Any questions or clarifications? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Approval of the Consent Agenda consists of the following. 20-3-1CA, Approval of Curricular additions, deletions, and modifications for Kinyana College, College of San Mateo, and Skyline College. 20-3-2CA, Acceptance of the Institutional Effectiveness Partnerships Initiative Grant, and 20-3-3CA, Acceptance of Gifts and Donations by the District. A board member would like to, hearing none, we will call...
Well, let me ask, because I know we did receive an email from a member of the public to remove one of these items. I don't know if, I guess it's the board's prerogative.
That's right. It's the board's prerogative. They've always had the option of removing an item for future discussion or clarification.
Well, I would have a question on the item 20-3-2CA, if there's someone who can respond. The emails stated that this is a for-profit venture. I don't know if anyone can clarify whether, what the status of the Equity Institute is. But that's, I was, it piqued my interest.
Okay, so why don't we remove that one? Have, we'll try to see if interim chancellor Claire or if President Jackson can answer that question. Can we vote on the other two?
Move approval of the remaining two items on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
President Schwartz, do you want me to speak to that now or at a later date?
Just a moment, please. We're going to vote on the other two items. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Was there a second on the motion?
Did we have, I'm sorry, we didn't get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have three seconds now. I think we're very clear. Thank you. So, yes, President Jackson, can you answer the question about the, that was trustee Oliver asked, on 20-3-2CA for profit?
Yes. Yes, the Equity Institute is not a... Yes, the Equity Institute is not a for-profit institution. It is still part of the college. We are moving towards that end. This grant is coming from the state chancellor's office under the Institutional Effectiveness Project Initiative. It is a $200,000 grant. We cannot get the money, even though we are spending on it because we've gotten initial approval until the board approves that. So it is money coming from the state chancellor's office. It's to define some of the coursework that we're looking at expanding in the institute. And right now, it is being supported by the district and the college. So it is not a for-profit institution.
Thank you. Clarify your question, trustee Oliver?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we...
I had a question as well, or an assumption I'd like to validate, if I might.
Sure.
Thank you. My assumption is when we typically get grant-funded or one-time funding for projects, that the hiring and expenditures that we make in these things are tied to the length of time that the grant or the funding is for. I would assume that that's the same case here, that we're not making commitments that go along within the period of funding that we have secured for this.
And Dr. Jackson, did you hear that?
I would... That is the correct assessment. The grant does not... It was supposed to have started in October. That's when we got the preliminary approval. But then they told us that we had to go through the board, and then they wanted some changes made to our project design. And so that's why we're bringing it forward now. It will go for one year once it's approved by the board. So it will cross over academic years, but it will be for 12 months only.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Dr. Jackson at this time?
It appears that we have a public comment, President Schwartz, or a bubble question.
Okay. Who is that? I don't...
It said Michael.
Michael. Would that be Michael Reiner by chance?
Yesterday, I would like to take issue with the notion of the for-profit focus of the institute. I was the interim dean of pre at Skyline College when President Regina Stombach-Straub charged me to draft the first letter of intent for this grant. So I am intimately familiar with the institute and its purpose. And its purpose was to be self-supporting and to be profitable as an enterprise activity. When I requested in my work the business plan so I could see how this will pay off in the future, there really was none. And I actually said, "I really can't write this grant because I really don't understand how this model will work. When will it become profitable, pay for itself? When will it be sunset if it's not profitable? What is the purpose of this?" Especially because the institute does not function for our faculty or our students. It is to bring in people from the outside who pay a college place $10,000 for a team, maximum of 10. But if there are only five, they still pay $10,000. In addition, this work, which was done for the previous 2016 and 2018 summits, were done by the dean of Equity and Student Services, I believe is the name, the Sata Hoptick. When the institute formed, he got a promotion to the executive director, plus both of his assistants as the dean were also transferred over with raises, and they're now all in the president's office. It's unfathomable what all these people are doing with now $1 million. Eight hundred thousand the board gave as seed money, and now $200,000 from the state. In this time of dire economic problems, I would hope as a citizen, we would not feed off the state trough and take their $200,000. Everything that can be saved for essential purposes. What will the institute do since they've already canceled the upcoming April conference and probably the summer conference? So it is totally unclear what these people are doing. I think the board needs to take a much more thorough examination of the work of the Equity Institute to decide whether it should be, at the very least, put in hiatus during these difficult economic times until once more it can be offering all of their workshops and conferences with a business plan that shows how it will be self-supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members on this topic?
Yeah, so I want to just clarify one more time because we heard from President Jackson, I think, a very unequivocal statement that the Equity Institute is not a for-profit institute. It is part of Skyline College, which is a nonprofit institution. President Jackson, is that correct?
Yeah, she seems to have left again. But I heard... That's exactly what I heard in her comment. It's not...
Yeah.
Oh, here she is.
I'm having trouble hearing anything.
Well, the district is muting everyone, and so they have to unmute me, even though I'm here and online. The district has unmuted me before I can speak. So I'm sorry, I was speaking and didn't know that I wasn't muted, unmuted. So I'm not sure of the information from the individual who spoke, but our books are open. We have done this before with other projects within the district in terms of providing seed money so it can get started and grow. That was the same thing with this project. It started as part of our program for... I'm trying to think of the word. It was part of our equity planning, and it grew out of that equity planning. The Equity Institute grew out of... The Equity Institute is out of... Okay. Grew out of the college redesign. So I'm not sure this individual is no longer associated with the college, so I'm not sure if the information that he has is still accurate. It doesn't seem to be. But no, it is part of the college. It grew out of the comprehensive redesign. The Equity Institute came about using funds under our equity planning for students and for faculty, and it has grown. And so these funds are to provide additional training, to expand the course offerings. And just like everyone else, we're going through the transition of shelter in place. So that was part of why we canceled those courses because of the directive that we got from the governor and from the county health department. So I think we're confusing things a bit. The cancellations were not due because we didn't get funding. The cancellations were due because of the health crisis and COVID-19. And we are continuing to move forward with that and looking at using Zoom and conferencing, just like we have been for this particular meeting. So they're really two different things and really shouldn't be confused. And the funding is really to pay for developing a business plan. If you check the webpage, we have it all out here. It's to develop a business plan. It's to look at expanding it so that we are looking at additional scholars to come in and teach, as well as our faculty, because for them, they have to take release time to be able to do that. So it's a combination of things. The IEP plan was presented to you. The budget is there in terms of how the funds will be used, but we can't get access to those funds until the board does approve it. And so I would urge the board to do so.
Thank you, President Jackson.
If I'm right, President Schwartz? So again, just a very simple... Just to confirm against, we're all on the same page here. This is not some sort of separate for-profit entity or subsidiary. It is part of Skyline College. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So if I might just make a comment, President Schwartz? I'm on the board of four other nonprofit organizations. We often talk about things like business plans and making sure we have sustainable plans for our programs. That doesn't mean that these are for-profit entities. It simply means we're trying to apply sound business practices to our nonprofit operations to make sure that they are capable of supporting themselves going forward and are not a constant drain on funds from the organization and so forth. So I just wanted to offer that as a comment in response to some of the, you know, sort of inflammatory comments that are being made using, you know, throwing around words that might confuse for the purpose of trying to make this seem like something it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mandelkern and trustee Oliver. Are we ready to take a vote on this issue?
Sure.
Excuse me, trustee Nouris would like to speak.
I defer to trustee Oliver.
Well, I think right now... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, we have before us a recommendation to accept some funds. And on that topic, I support the recommendation. I would also add that we are all in California in every public agency dealing with disruptions of business norms. And I do think that it's not a time where we should be putting on hiatus employees' livelihoods or salaries. There may be a future point. I mean, I'm an advocate of doing, you know, performance audits and reviews of lots of different programs. This may be one. The other trustees think at some future time after it's been around for a while, because I think it's still in its infancy, you know, that it would make sense to look at it, just like I think we should look at various other programs. But right now, I don't think that's the issue before us. And, you know, I think it's the right thing for us to keep this going and keep people on our payroll working rather than idle.
Thank you. Trustee Nouris, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. I would simply like to say that I also received the email that was directed to the board regarding this issue, how it's been discussed at this point. And trustee Mandelkern pointed out that much of it was quite inflammatory. And I would simply say that when someone typically writes to the board, to the five of us, and I believe that they are writing to us, they would like to share their opinions with us. However, when I see dozens and dozens of CCs to everybody up and down the county with the same information, then I begin to wonder who in fact is writing for us or for whoever's on the CCs. And that been receiving was not really sent in good faith, which then makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable about the credibility of the material that I'm even reading. And so I'm going to be very cautious in the future about what I read when someone sends something to me and it has dozens of CCs attached to it, because I'm wondering, is it for me or is it for another audience? And so that's just my observation. I also support the recommendation of administration and would support this matter.
Thank you. Very good.
I have a comment.
Where are you? Okay.
Yes, so I too agree with trustee Nouris and your observation. I want to make it very clear as a board member, as an individual board member, this is not the time to find opportunities to try to attack the equity work that we're doing as a district, the equity work that we're doing at our different sites. Yes, I acknowledge that the individual may have been a part of the process in its early stages. Obviously, it has evolved, and this is... I mean, that happens. But the work must continue, and if I have anything to do with it, it will continue. I 100% support the work of equity that we're doing within our district, and I'll continue to support that. And I highly will question, just as trustee Nouris said, someone's intentions of their questioning of it, the seeking out to either, like you said, to address a question with the board or address the question with the board and the rest of the county as a backdrop. This board supports equity within our district and will continue to do so. And we won't stand for individuals trying to steal our, I guess, the equity conversation for their own personal endeavors or agendas. This is who we are. This is who our district has been, and this is who we'll continue to be. And so we have students, we have faculty members and staff, that this equity work is changing. It's changing their lives, and it's allowing them to change the lives of the students that they come in contact with. And we support that wholeheartedly. And I support this.
Thank you, trustee Goodman. And I would also like to say that this is something that I'm very supportive of, that we established the equity programs a while back, and this is really a continuation, trying to keep it moving. I would say in my 24 years on the board, this would be the first time that we ever turned down grant money from anybody. It's hard to get those things and applications, and it's all for the very best cause, and I'm very supportive. And from what I hear, we're going to cast a vote in a few minutes, but I do think we are supportive and that we're going to move on at this time if that's agreeable to the board. Any other comments or questions? And do we have a motion at a second? I have forgotten. On twenty-three-two-C-A?
Move approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. I'm going to apologize, as I'll probably do throughout this entire meeting. I seem to have missed Annette Perle wanted to speak under CSEA announcements. So Annette, if you're still there? You unmuted. I saw you.
Oh, just wanted to say that we didn't have any comments, so tonight.
Oh, okay. No comments. Comment. Okay. Okay. Nice to see you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, where are we, anyway? Other recommendations. Twenty-three-one-oh-two-B, Approval of Contract Award for the College of San Mateo Edison Lot Project. Need a motion at a second to discuss the additional exemptions. Hello? I need a motion at a second, please.
Move.
Yeah. Thank you. Vice Chancellor Jose Nunes is announcing the award and recommendations. Jose? You're here somewhere.
Any particular questions on the project?
Okay, are there any questions? Well, are there any public comments or questions before I get to the board? Hearing none, board discussion. You have any questions for vice chancellor Nunes on the Edison project?
Hi, President Schwartz, I have two questions.
Sure.
Thank you. First question is, given the history of this project, shall we say, I just want to make sure, have we gotten clearance from legal counsel that we are authorized to move forward with this scope of work at this point in time?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. And my second question on the contract itself, this is being funded by Measure H funds, I see. Is it also a project labor agreement covered?
That is correct to both responses. It is Measure H funded, and it's also under a PLA.
Thank you very much. That's a good answer for both of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for vice chancellor Nunes? Okay, are we ready to vote? Hall of favor? All in favor, aye? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
I was aye in favor, but I was muted, sorry.
Oh, okay. So we have a unanimous aye vote for the approval of the contract for the College of San Mateo Edison Lot Project. Yes. Here we go. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Information reports. Update on the COVID-19 response. Interim chancellor Claire, you want to provide an update?
Okay, I think... Can everybody see the PowerPoint screen?
Yes.
I just shared it. Got it? Okay. Thank you. And you all can hear me okay? Okay, I'll try to get to this quickly. And yes, okay, I'm getting messaged. And first of all, I want to apologize. I know I keep going in and out, in and out. And first of all, I want to apologize, I know I keep going in and out, in and out. I feel like a TV producer, because I'm giving texts and trying to miss things behind the scenes. So I've been here the whole time, but I have to kind of do some texting just to make sure we get people on and off and that sort of thing. I'm going to go through this quickly, because this first part, because I know that, you know, I've been updating you regularly. The other thing is that when we opened up the task force and even the EOC, our procedure, and it's the NIM SIMS model, we log everything. So we actually have detailed logbooks and actually went back through that just to make sure I got everything. So just very quickly, it seems like a million years ago, but on March 2nd, we actually met for the first time as a task force. And if you recall, we enacted Level 1 of our pandemic plan, which was basically just to start sharing information with people, doing what we could to help stop the spread of COVID-19 at the time. It was the week of 3/10 that a lot of things happened. First of all, we formally activated our EOC. And we talked about that with you at an earlier, I think it was a closed session, about our emergency response. And very quickly, we scaled our pandemic plan activation or implementation from a level 1 to a level 2 to a level 3. I think that happened in a matter of days. Just some highlights, we made sure that our facility staff and our public safety staff, who I want to shout out, if any of them are listening, and Jose, you're there. These are folks that are always on the front lines and really never leave the facility. And that there were some trainings to ensure that they were staying, they were safe and that we were cleaning areas in a proper way. We also began to identify what our long-term needs were. And we did the very best we could to acquire as much as we could. Of course, there were shortages, but we did the very best we could and we're in better shape than most with respect to a lot of the critical cleaning supplies. Very important, and we'll come back to this later, but we also had a mechanism to capture the costs of the incident. And so we've got a very detailed log of the dollars we've spent to respond. Equally important, and again, you've heard this, I'm kind of doing this for the benefit of the public. We started developing a number of continuity operations planning. And I don't know if Carrie Mitchell's on the line, but she led that group and it splintered into other groups. But really, big shout out to this group for keeping us going. It was difficult. As you know, whenever there's an emergency, it's important to have unified communications. And we did implement that plan. And that's one thing I think we've been pretty disciplined about, is keeping the communication straightforward and simple. We also anticipated the need to go to distance, and so we did the very best we could to acquire laptops. Some of them are rented. And we basically kind of looked at everything cranny to make sure we had laptops to distribute to students and faculty. So I'm going to move to the next slide. Everybody can see that, and hopefully you're seeing what I'm seeing. Critical day was on March 11th, actually a board meeting, where that was our last day of face-to-face instruction. And then we canceled our classes from 3/12 to 3/16 to allow faculty and staff to prepare. An important part of that was, we actually had a number of while we still could in professional, we encouraged all employees who could work from home to work from home. I feel like we've been just on the, barely, but just on the front of the edge of the curve on a lot of this. As you know, the big day was on the 17th, where the Samhail County Health Officer and frankly, the entire region, as you know, issued the shelter in place order. We did resume classes on 3/17 in a distance mode. And we actually launched, obviously, to build those websites out so that we can simplify the information. This week, the laptop distribution, I think we've got them all distributed. And a shout out to our ITS people, first of all, for enabling the technology for this meeting, but also for being out there on the front lines, you know, keeping social distancing within 95 masks, but making sure that faculty and students who needed tech technology got it. And then this week also, no, we've security to, we were able to get Safeway cards, loaded Safeway cards mailed to all of our identified food insecure students. They're identifying with their address, so we get the cards to the right people. And then finally, we were finally able to get our hotline launch, where you can actually call a person and get a real human being 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. So I'll stop there, that's just a recap and shared most of that information with you as we've gone. Our current status, our EOC is still in operations, and I think it will be for some time. I know you all know this, but our county health officer, along with really the entire Bay Area region, announced an extended closure of schools until May 1st. We pretty much anticipated that.
Mike? Mike?
Yes, he was.
Mike, you're not coming in.
Always happen at the worst time.
Mike, you're not coming in.
You know, this happened to me, and Mike sent me a text explaining that it's
Texting him.
Our own slow, the slowness of our own connection causes gaps.
Okay.
There you are, Mike.
I'm back, sorry about that. Let me try to pull this back up. Hang on just a minute. This is, I think as Jeremy Wallace said, this is reality now. So you see what we're all kind of dealing with, our faculty. And then we're in meetings all day, this as well. I'm trying to load file, and it's really slow. Let me keep talking, I'm going to swing over to another computer here. And I'll just have to talk through this. Oh, here it is. Can everybody see it okay?
Yeah, it's good.
Yes.
Can everybody?
Yeah, it's back now, Mike.
So sorry about that. Okay, thank you. Maybe someone's streaming Netflix upstairs, I don't know. So our EOC is operational. Office are extended, you know, you know that. Student support is really important to us. I left off with long-term. We are working with Second Harvest Food Bank. And we're hoping to, we're hoping to work with them. This is just new today, to just to have kind of a drive-up distribution. We're going to put a call out for volunteers, because Second Harvest won't staff it, but they'll deliver the food. So I'll keep you, you know, posted on where we are with that. We are also going to send a student survey out this week. We wanted to give it a week, because we want to actually assess the student experience. And we even start faculty to have our students take the survey. And that's going to give us a good snapshot of, you know, how are we doing so far? I do want to echo Jeremy's comment that the students are just amazing. They seem to be adjusting as best they can to this new world, educational world we're in. And we have a number of student support, you know, functions. And even though we've been focusing on instruction, our online student support is fully operational. They're just meeting students in a different way, whether it's counseling or SparkPoint services, you name it, we're still up and running. As far as employee support, we have ongoing online training and professional development. If I'm not mistaken, ITS is still having drop-in Zoom office hours for people that need help, which is great. And we continue to use human resources and spark with that. That's just kind of a snapshot. What I really want to do, unless there's questions, let me pause for questions or comments, then I want to talk about our immediate next steps. Any questions or comments?
Sure, I have some questions, this is Trustee Goodman.
Yeah, it's Trustee Goodman.
Yeah, so on the mask, so as we're, you know, properly using masks, obviously, we know of the shortage of the mask for medical workers to actually support those that are affected by the COVID-19 virus. And if we're, I would hope that we're being very cautious as we're not purchasing them for, you know, while there's a demand for them elsewhere. So we're just making sure that we're doing any purchasing in the right manner. That's the first question.
Okay. Yes, and if Jose's on the line, or Michelle, they can chime in. We've been, you know, we recognize there's a huge demand and it needs to go to people that are treating patients. We have a very limited supply, because we do want to keep our employees protected as well. And so we're not able to, we actually got a call to, I think, from the county EOC. And we looked at our inventory, it's very low. And so we're just keeping what we can for our employee, making sure that they're using them wisely, because we know they're a precious commodity right now.
Okay. Exactly, right, okay. And then the other follow-up statement was around the volunteers. So the county might actually bring up for our students early on, the last couple of weeks, both for the Red Cross and for the county, trying to have, get an assessment of the volunteer capabilities and mobilization in San Diego County. And so I can send that contact to you to make sure that there was one, that if there's county or district employees or students that would like to volunteer and provide support to our county residents that are in need, they can do so by filling out the survey. Secondly, to reach out regarding manning and, or actually making sure we have staff for the food bank. If we are going to have a location at one of our colleges, they will man that.
Yeah.
The last week, I think there was upwards of 800 volunteers that lined up. And so the volunteers are there, they just had an event today. And so the volunteers are there, so I can afford that.
That would be wonderful, because I appreciate that, Trustee Goodman. Because, you know, our first priority is obviously our students and keeping our employees safe. But we want to be a positive, and I know you would all agree, we want to be a positive asset to this community while we're going under incredible amount of stress. And we do have, you know, time, talent and resources to share. So that would be wonderful. I'd appreciate that.
All right. And then, just as far as you said, these questions are just general questions around COVID-19 and our responses? Or is this just a pause and then you'll continue and then we'll have more questions?
Yeah, a pause and I'll continue. I just wanted to kind of get us kind of calibrated to where we've been and where we're at. And then I've got, you know, what happens next.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So that's coming. Okay. I don't, the last thing I want to go on to before we talk about what happens next or what we're seeing, I don't know, Bernada Slater, Bernada, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Can I mute her?
Yes.
I wanted Bernada to talk to you about our, okay. Bernada, if you could just take a minute, I'm going to stop on this bullet point about near-term fiscal outlook and really kind of relay you the conversation that you and I had this week about what, you know, what we're looking at just right now. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bernada, if that's okay with the board.
Yes, good evening, everyone. In our continuity planning, we are focused on short-term as well as long-term plans. And the short terms, we are analyzing impact on the COVID-19 that would have on our district funding during this fiscal year. So with regards to this year, we are much better positioned than some of other community college districts. Samhail County is a T county. So from that perspective, we should be receiving our April property tax allocation as budgeted. Next allocation will begin in December, and we most likely will be budgeting most conservatively after consulting with the Assistant's Office and reviewing potential appeals that might reduce our allocation for the next year, next fiscal year. This fiscal year, we do expect some students to potentially withdraw from classes, although we are making every effort to ensure that students do stay in the classes and they have most positive experience through this new method of deliver of instruction. But we are watching very carefully, and we are collaborating with instruction to quantify the population that may, for a variety of reason, withdraw from our classes, so we can make some data-driven projections for the next year. With regards to long-term, we're looking at the
Not, not, just, I want to, just, just short-term right now. I don't want to, I don't want to look past the end of this fiscal year. We'll talk about long-term down below, that's okay. So, I'm sorry, did you talk about liquidity?
Right.
Talk a little bit about liquidity and investments.
Right, right, so I know you might have some question about our investments. We have been in contact with Samhail County. We, as a matter of fact, we had a call yesterday, and our call was with representatives from PFM Asset Management, LFP. This is a company that in the past was responsible for compliance audit with regards to investment company, a policy. PFM manages assets that are year or longer, and the county manages those that are under a year to ensure liquidity. And during the call, we went over where county investments are as of yesterday. Again, things are kind of very fluid, as you can imagine. And we reviewed also county investment policy. So where are we now? As you might be aware, last week, we saw a race to cash and all asset classes were pretty much down, including stocks and bonds, and even including highly rated corporate bonds, AAA mortgage bond and so forth. So the only type of bonds that were spared were the US Treasury bonds. And fortunately, the county investments are over 50% in the US Treasury bonds. So this fared really well for us. Investment manager opined that the portfolio is in excellent shape. It's well diversified and has high-quality rated assets. And they continue to grow the investment policy at this point. Portfolios are set up for recession. And although every recession is unique, they are optimistic that the speed of recovery is forecasted to be quite rapid. And as unprecedented actions are being taken at this point, we are hoping that there's going to be some sense of recovery with the economy within some period of time. We have some other investments with the Morgan Stanley. There are four accounts set up, two for our general account, one for SMAC, and a much smaller for Cafeteria. So the two larger are with the Western Asset Management. And those are pretty much flat for all four, they are kind of flattish. We have a small decline month to date, about 0.3 of a percent. But they are kind of, they kept their value even given the quite turbulent markets. The one, the only investments that experienced more dramatic decline within the last couple of weeks were those related to our OPEB. As you may recall, we were fully funded at the beginning of fiscal year. And at the beginning of calendar year, the market kind of were going gangbuster, and we were overfunded with a nice cushion. Well, this cushion is unfortunately gone. However, we are still pretty much funded or close to funded, depending on the day we look. So we have a meeting scheduled for April 24th for our retirement. Both Board of Authority, we will be discussing investment and moving forward. Our actuary, Morgan Stanley, as well as our auditors will be in presence. Again, this will be a Zoom meeting. And we will be discussing current market conditions and our investment policy. And we will review it in the light of recent development. and our investment policy, and we will review it in the light of recent development. Um, again, portfolios are set um set up to weather recession and those fluctuations are expected as we are even with the O P E B for long term in it. And evaluate, those valuations also change each year depending on the um cost of uh medical expenses as well as our um experiences.
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt with a quick question, is I think I I missed uh in your comment, or maybe I didn't miss. But wh- where do you think we are now after kind of the crash of the past few weeks in terms of of percentage coverage of our liabilities?
Um, I think we're pretty flat, if we're, you know, depending on the day, uh, where uh our liability was about hundred and nine and we're probably about, as of today, we were about hundred and eight point something. So we're pretty flat, and of course, we have some uh money set aside this year for contribution, should we need to top up. Uh, but um, uh, they're speaking to our investment managers, and they said they did not want to make any um, you know, any sudden moves with this because they are very hopeful for recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Um, so this is it, and I'd be happy to have our investment managers in case there were any more complex questions that I cannot answer.
Okay, any, and I know we kind of freeze and unfreeze, are there any questions on the near term, and I think the way is that we're you know, as position might be, and we uh in terms of our liquidity, liquidity, so news. Is everybody still on? Are we frozen?
I'm here.
Good to go.
We're here, you're having a little bit of uh audio issues, Mike, you're, but I think we can manage.
Yeah, it comes in and out. Yeah.
The only comment I have is is um thank you for that presentation. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I appreciate the presentation, um, and uh that that sounds like good news. And I think there's so much unknown in in the world, in in our economy. And only time is is going to tell, you know, I think about things like um the investments of Calpers and Calsters. And I'm sure uh at the moment, any snapshot, it would be pretty grim. Uh, because all their equity uh investments have dropped dramatically. And um we just are going to have to wait and see what, you know, what kind of rebound there is. But uh potentially, this has uh, you know, the impacts that are beyond anything we can locally control uh in terms of how this affects the uh next several years in terms of the uh strength, I mean, the strength of investments that will affect everyone's lives, everyone's, you know, retirement and so forth. I mean, we're all going to be in that together.
Yep, that's correct. Um, I I um it, my conversations with the um investments manager are that um the economy um is going to be rebounded. All depends what's going to happen, how fast they, of course, they um, the um, the COVID nine um remedies are going to be developed and but um our investment before this, the county community college district, um, they they are well balanced and with the solid companies that are expected to rebound from this uh, from this uh challenges.
Okay, is it okay if I move on? Any other further questions? And, you know, this is probably going to be the first of many status reports as we, you know, this is a kind of the first time we've had a chance to catch our breath. Um, just kind of, you know, um, look, start looking forward. Um, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to kind of move on to the next immediate steps and and um I, you probably saw me go up and down with this, but this is uh where um I, we're going to ask for some board guidance. And um so uh this is really kind of an open conversation. And I think District Academic Senate President Wallace, are you still on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, okay. Um, so I want to tell you that um we had a great meeting. It was myself and the, um, I hear your son. Um, it was myself and the three college presidents with the um Academic Senate leadership uh today. And it was the um Academic Senate Presidents and Vice Presidents of these campus, including Jeremy. And um we talked about, you know, how do we, how do we get through the rest of the semester? And this is, the first one's a big one, um, but um, and Jeremy, please chime in if you want. It it's a hard decision, but we are recommending suspending face-to-face instruction for the remainder of the academic year. First of all, we're 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 closed till May first regardless, and you know, I'm 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 not an expert, but I think most of us recognize that we may get another notice to be closed for the month of May. The major universities around us have all suspended, and I can tell you that um City College of San Francisco, uh, Foothill DeAnza, I just heard West Valley today, and I can, you know, without giving away a lot of information, I believe a lot of community colleges are going to take the same um tack this week. In in, and I'm going to let Jeremy talk a little bit, but um it seemed to me like the consensus of of those representing the faculty thought that that was the right thing to do. Just, just for some continuity and predictability. So um I was going to let Jeremy speak a little bit as well, if that's okay.
Sure, uh, um, and yeah, and that's exactly right. The uh, we did talk about it. We had a emergency uh District Academic Senate meeting this afternoon. We did chat about our kind of position on this, and we kind of formally voted to recommend that we uh continue instruction online until the end of the spring semester. Um, we do, we did want to throw in kind of like a little footnote caveat, and that is that if possible, we would recommend that um Allied Health and other C T E programs uh be allowed to use their labs if um the county health department uh or the state of California deems that um acceptable. Um, and we're talking mostly about classes that require hours or clinical time or 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 things like that, so. Um, but overall, yeah, we we are supportive of um of keeping the instruction online through the remainder of the spring semester and uh to to provide the continuity and to give the faculty some uh some peace of mind, knowing that they're not going to have to uh like watch another deadline come up in like May second or something like that. We just want to, like, I think a lot of faculty just want to know that uh if we're going to do this online for the rest of the semester or not. Right, and so I think.
Question.
In that way, yeah.
Yes, so do we have a feel for, you know, how many students or how many classes that that are impacted that really can't go online? If, you know, it's like one of our fire safety classes where they're learning how to connect hoses or something and, you know, and hauling the hoses around or the auto mechanics classes where they're actually working on the transmissions or things like that, where where there's just not an online alternative for it? Do we have a sense for how many students are impacted, especially how many students who were trying to finish up their degree or their certificate this semester uh that this is impacting?
Uh, Jeremy, I might, I don't know if Carrie's on the line, but um, trust me, and that's a great question. And we're, we actually, with our continuity plans, we, I could, I don't know if I can get it to you right now, but we can get you that data. Um, I also want to tell you that the uh, that the State Chancellor's office, um, we have a weekly webinar with the State Chancellor and and State Chancellor's staff, and they're developing a number of guidelines to um, you know, and and policy changes and suspension of Title Five, recognizing that we're in this unprecedented um environment. And part of this is um uh providing some relief to the hands-on C T E programs where we can and providing virtual labs. There's also, um, as long as it's safe to do so, um, there are critical um programs like fire, like police nursing, you know, we can go right down the line where there's a recognition that in order for these students to finish, they are going to have to have the hands-on component. Um, and um at a state level, um, there's policies and and processes and resources um that are being developed. I know with nursing in particular, there's been a lot of discussion with the B R N in terms of lab hours and and, um, you know, increasing the simulation hours versus the hours. So um, that's a long-winded answer, I know I didn't get your answer, but we will do that, that's part of our analysis. Uh, we're also looking at, and again, I think this would be in conjunction with the state. Um, if we are in fact shut down and there's really no way to bring back some of these live classes, automotive's an example that's given it a statewide, um, statewide conversation, by the way. Um, might we be um uh innovative with respect to summer session and allow, you know, special sections, if we're able to open up for summer, to allow special sections to be able to finish um classes off for students? And Jeremy, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that.
No, I think he said it great, yeah, thanks.
Question.
All right, I have a question. Uh, Trusty, get me here.
Yes, Trusty Goodman.
Okay, uh, Mike, uh, Carrie, uh, Jeremy, and and the rest of the uh leadership. I obviously, I commend you all for being able to rally our uh faculty and staff to do tremendous uh work over the last few weeks with our students. Um, but keeping that that in mind, um, as we look out uh and and try to look through a lens of equity for our students on, and as we start to expand this from a couple of weeks to now, um, a month and a half, and then possibly for the rest of the semester. Um, have we considered any of what the implications are for our our students? Yes, that, um, you know, our housing is secure and some of those same vulnerable students that we've mentioned and that we keep in mind in the forefront as we um consider these uh implications of the actions that we're hoping to make, and then also our uh faculty and staff. Um, you know, some of the same challenges our students are facing, we have faculty that are still uh housing insecure. Um, you know, obviously, when we get further down the line on some of the other questions around, um, you know, what our housing situation is for um our employees in our district. But um my concern is, have have you considered the implications, and if so, what are they? And um how do we hope to address them, not just for our students, but our faculty and staff, ensuring that, you know, this is a shift from, you know, face-to-face what we've considered normal. And then um, you know, there's, it's very, it's it's challenging, and we know that uh they've stepped up to the plate on the short term. But are we flexible or are we um making sure that we're flexible enough to ensure that they have the support and the flexibility that's needed to ensure that they can uh manage their home situations as well as any other uh external concerns and challenges that they may face during this time?
I can, I can say a few things, Mike. I could. Okay. So go ahead, yeah, sure. Uh, yeah, awesome, yeah, great points, uh, Trusty Goodman. Um, we definitely chatted about a few of those today in our District Senate meeting. Um, we are, we are going to continue to push the district to provide the technology for students that need that. Um, but one of, some of the things that we're talking about in um District Senate, that we're going, we're going to start meeting weekly, by the way, because a lot of these questions that we need to kind of work through. Um, two, two of the ones that come to mind immediately are the um excuse withdrawals and incompletes.
Mike, Mike just texted me that he's lost audio, so I guess he's trying to figure that out. He didn't lose that audio, but he lost some.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're talking about like what are the options for students that because they have these like really personal obligations, um, what, how can we help them um get through the semester, complete their classes or withdraw from these classes without being penalized um by the institution? So we're going to be chatting about that um when we get back from spring break. And then the other piece was um talking about how how do we assess students in a fair manner while we're online? Um, so we're, we're going to be talking about like different ways to provide assessment and um whether that's like through like uh like group projects or more like qualitative uh assessment measures. Essays, for example, short answer, kind of get away from it. We we already know that multiple choice tests are stressful and um present problems in a face-to-face setting, and when we go online, it presents a lot more complications. We're going to be talking about that kind of stuff as well right after spring break.
Okay, and then also, uh, just, uh, could you speak to, you know, the support for um for our teachers during this time? Um, the added uh, you know, stresses and the condition that they're working in, um, is there any additional support that's being asked of 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 our uh faculty? And um what are some of the questions that were brought up as you're discussing extending it past May and uh through the end of the semester?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so um, so I just want to give a shout out to all of our D E um faculty and staff. They've been providing a lot of one-on-one support, a lot of Zoom um uh trainings online for faculty um transitioning over to Canvas. Um, and I, and I think my big thing, and it's been a kind of the the view of the Senate since we transitioned online is that we want the faculty to provide their content in a way that is most effective for them. Um, and so for some, for some of our colleagues that might not be hopping on Zoom like every time they have a scheduled lecture, right? It might be um utilizing other tools on Canvas to uh to teach their students. It might be small group conversations, it might be through email, right? We just, um, the 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 students are going to suffer when we start asking faculty to go beyond their capabilities in this new um modality. Um, and so we're trying to, so I, so like Bianca, Nick DeMello, all those D E folks, Erica Reynolds, Alison Hughes. So, you know, like all the P D coordinators are offering a lot of different um workshops. Uh, Roland Mo from uh the A S L T Division of the Skyline has been spearheading an instructional continuity website with a lot of different trainings. So there's a lot out there for folks, and I know it's, and I know it's overwhelming. Um, and I know, like, our faculty are dealing with a lot of the same personal uh obstacles that our students are. I mean, like me and my partner are both working from home. I have a two-year-old. In addition, we are also teachers now for our grade school kids, and so it's it's challenging for sure.
And I think that's
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
And lastly, before I can let you guys continue with the rest of the board asking questions, I think that's what I was trying to connect with regards to um, those added uh responsibilities and and trying to manage that. And more specifically, our adjunct faculty that were frequent flyers a few weeks back, and now they're at home in having to manage multiple uh classrooms within a a a shorter period of time. And then additionally, just the social emotional uh aspect of it, supporting our our faculty in this situation. Because what we're dealing with, yes, we're dealing in education, and we want our students to learn and we adapt. Um, however, we're adapting in a a real-life situation that's uh has been life or death for some. Um, my, even my children's uh grade school teacher um was dealing with the death in her family. And at the same time, it got to the point where she actually sent an email, or whatever it is, maybe she was just crying out, and she sent an email to the students and just saying, hey, this is what's going on with me. So are we making sure that we're not just saying, we want you to step up because it's great, and we will adapt and we will step up? Because that's what we've done, but are we making sure we're there for our faculty and our staff socially emotionally?
All right, yeah, that's certainly something that we can uh work on. I mean, I know a lot, a lot of um departments are kind of doing their own social, emotional um kind of uh gatherings, if you will, and like the English Department of C S M, for example, we have Friday Happy Hour now. We're just kind of hop on Zoom and like have some beers together, right? And so, and I know we're not the only department doing that kind of stuff.
All right, all right.
I'm, if it's okay, I'm, Trusty Goodman, I'm sorry, I I missed the first part. Um, you know, the audio is in and out for all of us, but um I want to echo, first of all, great questions. The analogy I would make, and I've been making to people, is we are on a boat and it sunk, and we all run, all had to hop on a life raft. And that's what we've, we've been on a life raft for the last week and a half, kind of staying alive. And um as we start talking about the year ahead, and that's my next set of slides, I suppose. Um, you're absolutely right. Um, we've got to rethink our institution um and how we're going to connect. And um as soon as, um, you know, we we've got to look at the supports for our students. You know, I think I'm I'm looking forward with the Academic Senate, because, you know, honestly, just in a very short period of time, I think we did a a good job of transitioning twenty-two thousand students, distance ed, and faculty and everybody else. Um, and it's a new work environment for our staff and our administrators, too. We're all, you know, it's a, it's, it's odd to work, and you're, I know you're all experiencing it as well in your own careers. Um, but um, you know, our next task is to build this thing and improve upon, you know, kind of the life raft that we're on and really build an organization that's going to serve students and and everybody well. And really build an organization that's going to serve students and everybody well for the next several months. Because we don't know how long we're going to be in this situation, frankly, and it's, it's, it's all the more difficult trying to do it at a distance. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Trusty Mandelker, can I make a point? Two things that would seem to me to be important to prioritize. One would be to sort of identify the specific. So that we can respond very intentionally to the needs of our students. The first would be to really identify where are the gaps that students need to be able to complete programs. For you mentioned, for example, those things that we may need to do as a special session during the summer. You know, do a special automotive class or something so students can finish up their certificate programs or whatever it is. So that we have a very specific and prioritized list of those things that we know what we need to do. The second one, and I don't know if we've looked into this yet or not, but it would seem to me to also be a priority. Is to identify how many students have we lost because they don't have access to the technology that they need to be able to take these online courses? Do we have a sense for, you know, students that just basically have given up because they can't get online because they don't have high speed internet access or whatever? And what do we need to do to focus on meeting the needs of those students to get them back to reengage with us? Either online through assistance that we can provide or at least identifying them and keeping tabs so that when we do get back to face to face instruction at some point, we can make extra effort to ensure that those students are reengaged with and returned to their classes.
Right. Thank you, Trusty, and great comments. As I said, we'll get a little bit of a taste of that with the first survey that's going out to students this week. But absolutely, that's my concern too, is how do we keep our students in our institution? And it is building a different institution very quickly that we don't have a choice.
So my question is related. And it sounds like you're going to be getting a survey and getting feedback to get a sense of how different students are either able to adapt or not able to adapt to provide that kind of data. Is that, is that what you were saying?
Yes, and we already did a technology survey to get kind of a sense of where their technology needs would be and we've been working off of that. So, yes.
So there's a related question. I think people have talked about about this, but technology or no technology, we know online delivery is is not for everybody. And I, I, this is not completely unprecedented, although I'm going to go way back to when I was in college. And that was when we didn't have technology to be able to do distance, you know, online instruction. But when I was in college, Nixon invaded Cambodia and students went on strike and at Kent State and elsewhere, students were killed. And most colleges shut down. Including the college I went to. We went, our administration went to simple pass fail, no grades. If you had been doing everything to lead you toward, and this was in May, so it was close to final exam. If you were doing everything that was leading you towards successful completion, obviously not knowing your final exams outcome, you got to pass. I don't know if that's something that the state is considering. I don't think we could do it on our own, but it may be what we are going to have to end up doing on a statewide basis.
Yeah, good point. Jeremy, do you want to try to answer that a bit? Because, you know, there's been talk statewide and locally, right?
Yeah, yeah, so there's, so this is something that a lot of faculty in our district are interested in, but there's two main obstacles to offering pass, no pass at this moment. The first one is that Title V does not allow students to apply for a pass, no pass after, I think, like week five or six. So we'd have to get Title V relief from the state chancellor's office. I think they are talking about that. And then the second hurdle that we have is that certain core transfer classes cannot be transferred as a P on the transcripts. And so it messed up articulation with a lot of our UC and CSU transfer partners. I believe the state is also in conversation with the UCs and CSUs to to hopefully figure something out along those lines. I do know that with the UCs that they're all on different pages when it comes to the pass, no pass. UC Berkeley transitioned to pass, no pass, but UC Davis has announced that they have no intention of going the pass, no pass. And so if we were to go to pass, no pass in our district or as a system, we'd have to have the buy in from the entire UC system and the entire CSU system as well.
If, if, I'd like to kind of stop on this first point here because the reason why we have to put this in front of you now just for some guidance is that we have faculty about ready to go away on spring break and we really need some guidance. Again, just in our business continuity plan, there's a, there's a whole bunch of things that we could really kind of take off our plate to worry about if we were able to make this decision now. And I'm getting all kinds of pressure. Not only from, you know, the faculty that, you know, really need to know, you know, how am I going to be teaching the rest of the year? But also the staff and the administration, because there's, there's a whole bunch of things. So I hate to press you on this, but I kind of need to get a sense what your direction would be on this. Because I'd like to, like to say one way or another, you know, to the faculty before spring break, what direction we're heading in.
Well, Trusty Goodman here, I think I support it. Our faculty and staff are our most important valuable resource. And so, you know, with that in mind, I definitely support this and I appreciate you having that in mind and wanting to give them that information as soon as possible rather than to continually, like we stated earlier, just handing it, adding information out in drips. And so I support.
This is Trusty Mandelker. I agree. I mean, given that the classrooms are going to be closed until May first, that leaves about maybe three weeks to try and bring everybody back. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to try and accommodate, you know, face to face for the last three weeks of the semester. Again, given the caveats we've talked about before that we try and be very intentional about identifying students who are not going to be able to complete programs, students who are at risk because of the lack of technology and we try and make those accommodations as best we can. I don't think we have much of a choice other than to spend space to face instructions.
I would agree. And something that Mike said early in the day was about to start up again is instant. It takes a while. And so it just makes more sense that we're on that road anyway to be able to just go through the remainder of the academic year. Go ahead, Kaylin.
Okay, was there an email sent out saying that we'll be going virtual for the rest of the semester?
Kaylin, no, not yet. And what would happen is if I get, if we get direction tonight, then we would notify the students probably as early as tomorrow, because students also need to know what's going on, right? That's a very good point. So I appreciate that.
Um, I was also concerned about the, if we are changing the rating to letter grades to pass to non-pass.
Yeah, I can take that. Yeah, we're actually, there's no chat of changing from letter grade to pass, no pass. It's kind of an idea that's been thrown around at state level and also in our district. And if for some, like all the stars aligned and we did have the option to go pass, no pass, students would not be required to do so. That would be something that students could opt into.
I will just say to my, my grand, my grandson is from a college in Indiana. He's doing classes online, but there are a couple that they said, his instructor said, it's okay, we're done. Just going to take the work that you've done so far. So I'm saying that, thinking, Jeremy, some of this may be individual when it comes to the class, when it comes to the professor or something, not the pass, no pass, but just to finish up a class.
You mean to like basically give them credit for the first like seventy percent of the class and then?
Yeah.
I mean, that would work if we were on a pass, no pass, for sure. But, you know, yeah, I mean, like, yeah, I guess that would be up to the professor. But to me, if we're doing a letter grade and you only do seventy percent of the work, then that's a C, right? So. A nice curve.
So I, I'm hearing, I, I, it's not an official vote. I don't, I don't, that's not our procedures. And obviously we won't be able to vote on it because it's not an action item, but I'm, I'm hearing consensus that, that, that is that's the direction of the board in general.
I think so. We didn't hear from, we didn't hear from Tom, but I'm pretty, I think, I would, I would agree.
Yes, okay, well, you could know if you like. No, I've been here. This, I mean, it's very disappointing for everyone. I mean, I see this as a tough decision to make and I agree, we can't just be feeding information a little bit at a time because people need to know. But we don't know either really where we're going to be the beginning of May. I doubt if this thing is going to be over by then. I mean, it would nice if it was because, I mean, we do have students that basically this is their, this is their last, these are their last days at the college. And they've invested time and effort and made relationships with their fellow students, with their teachers and with the school. And you know what? It's not just grades. It's the, the social aspects of all of this. And, and the fact that, you know, there are ceremonies that will not happen or there'll be an alternative. I mean, these are all important things that we need to deal with as well. I guess there's not much we can do about it because we can't control what's going to happen in the future. So it's just a conclusion we have to live with. And, I mean, I just know my, my son's a senior in high school and, you know, he didn't go to school after the thirteenth. And it's like, he and his friends never figured that was the last day they're ever going to be in their school again. See their teacher, see everybody else, have no graduation, have no nothing. It's just over. It's kind of a letdown. And I think we all feel that. But, you know, it's, it's the decision that has to be made. So I guess we make the tough decision. And if something should change in four weeks or in five weeks or in six weeks, just as we made this decision, we can make another one to adjust. That's my thought.
President Schwartz and President Chancellor Claire, there was a question from the audience to us, which is what will happen to faculty who cannot operationally continue to teach their coursework? And this might be an opportune time to address that issue for our faculty and our staff, frankly. And I believe, at least as, speaking as one trustee, you know, that, that we want to give confidence and assurance to our staff, faculty and classified staff, that, you know, we intend to keep everybody engaged and whole and through the end of the academic year. And we will do our best to accommodate everybody. And I'm sure everyone is going to do their best to try and perform their duties that they can. Sort of my impression of them exists is worth a little bit of discussion with the chancellor and my colleagues here.
If it's, if it's okay, President, I could, I could respond. And we're also, Trusty, I mean, that's exactly the way we look at it. We have to work out an MOU with the AFT, but, and I don't want to speak for AFT, but we've had some email exchanges. You know, first of all, permanent faculty or, you know, the permanent faculty, they're going to be paid and it's not their fault that they may be teaching classes that we have to suspend. And, you know, I know faculty and they're always working on curriculum. It's, it's not, you know, teaching is the outcome of a lot of other behind the scenes work. So I know our faculty are all working. We also want to make sure that our adjunct faculty, again, the handful that are teaching in programs where they have, you know, they have to run a live lab. We're committed to carrying those faculty through the semester as if, the easy way I can say it is as if face to face, it never stopped. Because I, again, it's not their fault. Same thing with our classified staff. We have a number of classified staff. And I touched upon this before that are public or student facing. And what we're doing right now and Trusty Goodman, I didn't hear, you know, your, the first part of your question before about students and I don't know if this came up, but I, I think that there's a, if we're smart about this, there's a way we can use classified staff that would otherwise be doing on campus work in a way where we match them up to classes or students and we've got that extra touch with students. So our goal is to keep everybody as busy as we can, but most importantly, keep them whole through the rest of this academic year and, and do it, you know, in a way that people are truly contributing. So I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, go ahead. I just, and I think maybe what Candace is also referring to in her question is what, what do we, the, what are we going to do with the classes that have requirements that are outside of just attending a lecture? And so I think what she's referring to, like what I think the chancellor's office is called hard to convert courses. So it'd be like nursing, the respiratory therapy, the, the X-ray folks, automotive, like people who need certain number of hours on either, either on, on a machine or a lab or inside a clinic or patient facing or client facing. I think those are the ones that she's referring to. And, and kind of the, the answer right now, and Mike, you can definitely chime in if I'm wrong. But I think we're really waiting on the accrediting agencies to give us more guidance on what to do with those classes. If for whatever reason, like these, these bodies don't give our students more leeway, my, my, I think that we should be utilizing the incomplete option. You know, Chancellor Claire mentioned like using summer schools a way to make up hours possibly. For me, I think we just got to do everything we can to avoid canceling these classes. Because these students have invested seven, eight, nine weeks of their lives into these courses. And we got to find a way to make sure that they get the hours they need to finish their certificates.
I agree, yeah. I'm going to send you all in an email link to the chancellor's office webinars. They're about an hour long. I don't know if you want to sit through a lot of that, but there's a lot of policy discussions that, that are being made and it might help. I mean, for instance, there's a policy change just on withdrawals that, you know, we don't want to penalize. It's because some students are going to withdraw. I mean, we're going to do our best. And the chancellor's office has come up with, you know, loosening of the language. So you're, you know, the withdrawal doesn't go on your transcript as a penalty. There's all kinds of things. So if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and send you those links. You can view them at your leisure. We meet every week, the entire state, and I've actually been pretty impressed with the state chancellor's office. They've, they've really stepped up to try to, and stepped in to try to provide some guidance to a lot of these questions. Okay. Can I move on to the next? Yeah, so I don't know if we need specific guidance yet, but, you know, the reality is as you look around, you read the news, number of universities are postponing their graduation ceremonies. And again, I, I don't want to, we are so resource crunched right now in terms of people. And we're really completely focused on, you know, our instruction and our student support. I'd like us to consider postponing graduation ceremonies another year. And we may not have, we actually may not have a choice when the time comes. And if we can, I don't necessarily need guidance tonight. We have a little bit of time. But the sooner we can get to that answer, that the, the less I have to put or we have to put resources on creating graduation ceremonies. So it would just mean, you know, we would still have the ceremony. There's also, I was on a call with a number of Bay Area chancellors and there's also this virtual ceremony you can have. And I'm not sure, you know, we'd have to talk about that. But anyway, I just want to kind of put it on your radar. I don't necessarily need feedback tonight, but it's something that we need to, we need to kind of get a handle on sooner rather than later. And as I said, come June, we may not have a choice. I'm not sure.
Can I jump in for a second on that to provide some, at least one trustee's insight? I've talked to a number of students at other institutions that have faced the same issue and have made the decision to postpone or cancel their graduation ceremonies. And I, I understand and I absolutely support that, that we've got priorities that we have to deal with. And, you know, a graduation ceremony is probably not the highest priority issue when we're dealing with students' food insecurity issues. And we're dealing with academic issues of how do we complete these courses and so forth and so on. But the graduation ceremonies are a big deal for our students, for a lot of our students. And I think it's important that when, and I also agree, I think, given that we're talking about suspending our face to face instruction for a major academic year, I would be a hundred percent shocked if suddenly we said, oh, we can't teach classes on May twenty first, but suddenly on May twenty third, we can hold a graduation ceremony on campus in person. That to me seems unlikely to happen. So. So, so, so I am completely comfortable with the idea that we're going to have to postpone our graduations ceremonies. But I think the operative word here is postpone. At the earliest possible time, when we can have a face-to-face gathering, I think we should do that. We owe that to our students who have worked so hard to complete their degrees and their certificates, where it's a big deal for them and for their families to be able to celebrate that moment together in person. And honestly, the, the online alternatives are not a particularly satisfactory alternative for that feeling. And so I think we owe that to our students, that we reschedule that just as soon as possible, that where we can safely assemble a group and have a function like that on our campuses, and that we make that commitment to our students.
Yeah, let, let me just say, I'm going to use my grandson again as an example. This college immediately canceled their graduation. And immediately, a protest came out from parents and students. And it was so negatively done that, and I can't speak for them, but I think if we can use the word postpone as long as possible, and realizing we don't know what the future holds, and it may not happen. But they have, they've worked hard to get there, and all of us know, that's a big, big day for them. So I'd like to just keep that word postponed in there for as long as we can.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and the intent is just to get this on your radar. I'll, I'll check back with our folks to see, you know, we'll hold out for as long as we can. I, I saw, frankly, though, I saw something from Governor Newsom, I think it was yesterday, that said we, we need to be prepared for the next twelve weeks of this. So, you know, I'm just like trustee man, I'm trying to be realistic. So we'll, we'll hold out as for as long as we can. Because I completely agree. As a parent who, you know, had the honor of watching three of my daughters graduate from, you know, the institution that I led, it's so special. And, and so many of our students are first time, first in their family to attend, first to graduate. So I hold those values as well. But I just wanted you to, you know, I didn't want you to be surprised as we move down this road and, and all of a sudden, you know, we're, we're in that spot.
Honestly, I, I think actually communicating earlier rather than later is actually probably a good thing to do if the students aren't wondering. And I think it's actually an opportunity to make lemonade out of lemons here. Because I think this can actually be a very positive thing. Because these students will have gone through a singular event in education. And, and making it through this is, is going to be so special and so commendable that this is going to be actually, I think, a really special commencement ceremony when we do have it. And it's going to be really honoring our students and our faculty and staff who have pulled together to make it through this time. And I think it's really going to be quite a special occasion when it does occur. And I think we should let students know that, that this is going to be even more meaningful and more special than the traditional graduation ceremony has been.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, let's not add to the uncertainty. If we can provide answers, we should do so at the earliest convenience for, for our students. You know, as Karen mentioned, as a, our personal anecdote for me, I'm a father of a middle college student that's set to graduate, and a student that is graduating from Skyline with her associates. And just listening to them, one is already, their prom has been canceled. A lot of these events in their lives, while they're, seem small to us as adults, to them is very big for them, as well as the fact that, you know, the, the uncertainty. When all you do is in any part of social media, on the news, when they hear parents talking, it's all about this, this doom and gloom, this uncertainty. And that affects students totally different than it affects us as adults. And so we just have to be mindful, if we can address some of that uncertainty sooner rather than later, we would, that would be helpful.
Okay, okay. That's great. And I'm so glad we had this chance to talk because it's very helpful for us to hear what, what the board has in mind. And we can, we can make that decision. I mean, I, I, I think if you were to talk, at least to the, the administrators, it would, the recommendation would be just to make this decision now. I don't know how the faculty feel about it. And again, I think where we're at, I think the decision's actually going to be made for us, frankly.
Probably, probably.
So.
I'll just throw one more thing. I have a granddaughter who's a senior in high school. And she got the notice today, and she's devastated that she, her whole senior year is ruined, and my life is ruined. And I tried to turn it around by saying, if everybody does what they're supposed to do, maybe there could be something that is positive at the end of this. So it got her more enthused as to why she has to stay home, and why she has to stay distancing and whatnot, and participate in what we're doing. Just don't lose that opportunity, you know, because it is, it's probably, in their life right now, it's the worst thing that's ever happened.
Yeah, it's horrible, absolutely. Okay, are there any other comments about that? So we'll, I'll, I'll email you with some details before we, you know, before we do anything. But it's, it's good to hear you and hear your thoughts on that. We touched upon this before, but we, I think we collectively hold the value of keeping our employees whole. At the same time, we're going to, you know, work through HR and maybe get some outside advice about, you know, there's a lot of federal and state aid. And thank you, a, a number of you have sent me information, and I really appreciate that. And we're, we're getting that same information. So I don't have a lot of details here, other than we're going to work really hard to leverage federal and state resources to assist our employees in, in whatever way we need to, while, you know, keeping them whole. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that. We need a little bit of time to kind of develop a comprehensive HR plan that I, you know, I can certainly share with you. As I said, we're still on the life route, we're starting to climb out of it. And, you know, trying to get our, you know, normal business back up as best we can. So I don't know if you have any comments or concerns or questions about that. I know it's a very broad bullet point, but I just wanted to convey that to you.
I have a comment, and I, I concur. We also, anything that we can do to let our employees and our students who also work for a living, and our employees and students have family members who work for a living, who may be impacted harshly by stay-at-home orders and having to stay home to care for their kids who are out of school, to help them, inform them of what kind of aid is being made available through the federal emergency funding. I, I, I would really urge us to develop some sort of simple information, you know, that needs to be run through a lawyer to make sure we have it all correct, and share that information as widely as possible. Because beyond our own employees, there are going to be thousands or tens of thousands of people in our college community who are going to be suffering through jobless, joblessness because of this.
Great. Any, sorry?
No.
And then, I'm sorry, any other comments? I didn't want to, I can't see you all at once. So I just wanted to make sure I got every comment. Then last, last.
Kaylin, Kaylin has something, Mike.
Sorry, Kaylin, I didn't see you.
Um, so I understand that our schools are able to give devices to those students who don't have devices at home. But like you guys mentioned before, students who lost their jobs or can't work from home, how are they able to, like, pay off the bills that they still have? And like, how are they able to, like, afford wifi, given the depth that you have given them? I feel that that should be something to think about. And also, along with the graduation, I think it's unfortunate that we do have to postpone it. But I'm thankful that you guys are postponing it instead of, instead of creating it to make it more virtual. But the good side of that would be, like, I don't know, I just feel for students who like, we just have to think of the situation as students who graduate, if they were students who graduated in the fall, and just wait till spring semester to cross the stage. So, yeah, I feel like good things will take time, and hard work waiting for them.
Thank you, Kaylin.
Thank you, Kaylin. And, and, you know, we, I do believe we're, we're shipping information, at least out to students, about internet access, and Comcast is only one provider. I saw something flash about Comcast, and we actually shared that with students. But there are other providers that we, we found that are offering special deals. But again, as we sort of come out of, you know, what, what the new normal is, you know, definitely, I think this is part of that, that other conversation that many of you have expressed, is what do our students need right now to stay in school? And, and that's, that's, that's a piece of it. The, the last thing, and we don't, we don't have to make a decision, but we actually, you know, we kind of Gantt charted all this stuff, you know, and we kind of backed into, when, when do we need the decision date? Again, you know, Newsom said we're going to be in this for twelve weeks. I project that out to June fifteenth, I hope he's right. If he's right, then summer school, you know, we can do face-to-face. But we've got to kind of get an indication of whether we're still in distance mode or face-to-face pretty early. It impacts our scheduling, you know, and I, I don't have, I just want us to think about it. We don't have to talk about it tonight, I know it's been a long presentation. But I wanted to put that before you as just, just to get it on your radar. And we'll continue to, to talk with, you know, the faculty and with those of us that have to plan summer school. We're not canceling summer school, but we, we may find ourselves offering it in the same mode if things don't improve. So that's just a, an FYI for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is that the end of it, or have I had a few questions, but I did want to make, the rest of the board had an opportunity to ask their questions if it was related to your last statement.
Anybody have a question about the summer school? I don't, I, it sounds like we're going to do, we will or we won't, right?
Yeah, right. Okay, so my, my questions, there's about, I think, four, five maybe. But the first of the questions, can you describe the, the current essential workers that are showing up daily? And are they receiving any additional pay for, for work, for the current working conditions?
From what I understand, it's our, and it's our facilities and our public safety. They, I know we're kind of on a rotating schedule. I don't know if Vice Chancellor Nunez is on the line still. Jose, are you there? Can you, can you answer that?
Yes, sir. Most of the staff is at home. We do, as the chancellor just articulated, we have a few on a rotating schedule of custodians that come in. They work hand in hand with the public safety folks and the IT folks in terms of the distribution of equipment, laptops, and things of that nature. But right now, it's bare bones, if you will. In terms of additional pay, my understanding is that everyone is getting paid. They're not getting additional pay, to the best of my knowledge. It's just regular pay, similar to what the folks that are working from home. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's it.
Is that something that's, is that something that has been brought up either with the, their representative groups? Or is that something that staff is considering to ensure that there is some type of, I'm not sure the right phrase, whether it's hazard pay, or just the working conditions that they're in when we're other faculty and staff are being asked to stay at home, if they're being asked to stay at home by the government. And, you know, we're deeming them essential employees, and they're going in. So has that been questioned, or even, has there been any thought around that?
So trustee Goodman, good question. And this, this would be part of the MOU, right, with ASME and CSCEA? And so that, that's under, it's under discussion, I'm sure that'll be under, as we go through the MOU process.
Okay, all right. And then, and so would you need board input from that? Or is that just something that you'll take care of and bring to the board?
Yeah, I think, I think, because it's, you know, with the MOU, it's a negotiations process. So I think, I'm happy to have input, but I think it'd probably be more appropriate in a closed session, if that's okay.
Okay, no, I just, you know, I, yes. We need to make sure we're, we're, if we say we're, I mean, it's been said, that, you know, we're known for certain things, great things as a district, and I definitely believe one of them should definitely be taken care of our employees. My next question is, how many students are we supporting through our extended food insecurity program? How many prior to the pandemic?
Right.
And then, our current students that are experiencing food insecurity and would have otherwise qualified for, prior to the closure of the schools, have been, you know, have they been informed of this effort? And should they be?
Yes, and unfortunately, Tom, I don't know if Tom's, he, he had a personal commitment that he, he had to be, he had to deal with. But Tom and Sparkpoint folks have been working on this. I heard actually just this afternoon that, you know, we, we had a thousand students on the, on the, the, the food insecurity, a little over a thousand, where we were distributing food. And we've actually been able to, from what I understand, we've made contact with every one of them. We need their current home addresses. And I, I think I mentioned this in an email to you, that Safeway won't just let us email the e-cards that we actually had to distribute physical e-cards. But I think so far, we've had four hundred and sixty-seven students respond today. And those cards are going out to students. And then, as I mentioned, we're, we're, you know, it's, we're working with Second Harvest. The other piece of this is, you know, for students that still need dry goods or what have you, we would actually ship those via UPS to students. And then hopefully, with Second Harvest, and if we get enough volunteers, we'll be actually able to kind of rerun our food pantries through Second Harvest, ultimately at all three campuses. And, you know, I, I don't know, I think you guys are on district emails. So I'm hoping you're seeing the emails that are going out to our students, but all of these resources are communicated to our students. So I, hopefully, I answered. We're doing the best we can under the circumstances. And we are getting direct support to those students that were, that were in our, our food insecurity program before. It took us a little longer than we had hoped, but I know.
Right, I get that. And so what we're, so just to be clear, it's about a little over a thousand students that were before. The second question is, the second part of that was, any student that's experiencing food insecurity at this moment? And are they able to still, as if the school was open face-to-face, even though it's virtual, are they given that information that they can to also receive some type of support around food insecurity?
That's, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah, that's a great question. And actually, I just saw something pop up from Kerry Mitchell and Aaron McBean, and they said yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, so this is one hundred dollars each student right now. And then we're making sure that the students are getting this, this support along with other resources that are within the community.
Yes, and, and it's actually, it's actually, there's two levels, and they've kind of assessed this, and we can get you more information. But it's seventy-five or a hundred and fifty based upon need. And there's an assessment there, yeah.
No, that's, that's.
Trying to scratch the dollars, yeah.
Yeah, of course, thank you. And then, the other question, it relates to, it's related to the, our faculty and staff housing. It's Kenyatta and both CSN. We have a housing board meeting next week, president, our board president and myself.
Yeah.
And. And so, Mike, my question is, how many vacant units do we have right now, if any? I'm not even sure if we have any. And where are they located? And then the other question is, how might this board provide some input on to, to board president Swartz and myself as we have our meeting next week to discuss not just the COVID-19 and our response to it regarding faculty that are expected to vacate in the coming months, or, you know, at this current time, to make sure that, you know, we're not displacing our employees as well as if we did in fact have any vacant of, of units right now, how are we ensuring that they're not staying vacant? And making sure that if there are families or faculty or staff that are in dire need for some type of housing, that we're addressing that, and not just, you know, putting that aspect on hold.
Mitch, are you, did you hear that? The, the first part of the question was, where are we on terms of units? I'm not sure if Mitch is able to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm here, yeah. And so between both complexes, I think we have around number, maybe a dozen vacant units. between both complexes, I think we have a round number, maybe a dozen vacant units. The overwhelming majority, I think, um, all but one or two are at Kenyatta Vista. Uh, and as we have gone through the construction process at Kenyatta Vista and the, the full set of repairs done there, we have by design, uh, left those units vacant until that construction is complete. Um, and certainly the conversation we can have at the housing board meeting next week, uh, about if we want to, um, begin immediately, uh, filling those. Um, the work on, on building one at Kenyatta Vista, uh, should be wrapped up relatively soon. So you can probably start filling those, uh, more quickly. Um, so we can continue to have a discussion next week.
Thank you. And then, uh, the second part of the question, I guess to the board, um, you know, is there any input you have, um, as, uh, President Schwartz and myself are, are going to be attending on, and are on the boards that we have with regards to your opinions or input on what our stance should be as far as, um, addressing, uh, this, uh, response by our district and, um, ensuring obviously with the countywide, um, eviction ban. And, and even if it's not an eviction ban, but just ensuring that we have the appropriate response to our faculty and staff, um, at this, uh, time.
Thank you. Thank you for asking for input. I'll be happy to offer some. I think, you know, for this trustee's recommendation is the, um, you know, termination, uh, time limits or whatever you want to call it, where people have to move out after their time is up and, you know, so we, we should suspend that until this current crisis is over. Uh, and plus some reasonable period of time, 60 or 90 days or something after that, to give people a chance to get their lives recalibrated again. Because I think expecting somebody to be able to go out and buy a house right now is, is crazy. I mean, this is, I think we just have to recognize that this is a emergency situation and we need to just, uh, put things on hold until it gets resolved. I would also like to see, uh, I was surprised. I didn't know we had 12 units that were vacant. Uh, I understand why with, with, you know, the construction going on down to Kenyatta Vista. But if we can get those units, if there is, if there's demand for them, uh, from people who have been displaced or whatever, in situations where they can't, uh, be, be housed anymore, but we can make those available. I think we should make those available as quickly as we can.
You know, I'm just going to remind everybody that, um, last June, the board, housing board gave everybody in Kenyatta an extra year because of thanking them for all that they've had to endure with the, with the construction and whatnot. So I think it's going to be a tough topic in some respects to extend if people will, you know, need to have more time. I agree. It's not the time to displace anybody, but I just throw that out there. I think it's going to be a tough conversation to have. Only because we just had it last, last June. So we'll be happy to curate on your behalf.
Uh, can I jump in at this point?
Yeah.
I think that really what's been going on is, uh, they've been kind of having, you know, rolling periods of time.
Yeah.
What they're doing in the courts, you know, they're putting things over, everything gets moved down 60 days or whatever. Uh, and, and I think, uh, the, the, the point which was made in some of the material that was circulated in which trustee Mandelkern articulated is the fact that people can't go out and find other housing because they're supposed to stay indoors. So, uh, it's kind of a catch 22. So I think that we need to, uh, if we're going to do anything, extend by reasonable periods of time. And I don't know what that is. I don't think any of us do at this point. But be prepared to allow people additional time to, uh, transition to other places relative to the 12, uh, units which are no longer occupied at this time. Uh, I don't know what the protocols are for filling them, uh, or if there's a waiting list or how it goes. But, um, I, I, I would, I, I don't think we're talking about, uh, putting people, you know, that are just homeless at this point or anywhere that are displaced in the housing on a temporary basis, uh, that don't really fit our criteria at this point, because then, um, having them leave when the time comes, uh, becomes difficult. And, um, I think we need to stick to our protocols relative to, uh, to filling vacancies. But I would definitely give people time to, uh, uh, find other, uh, reasonable housing under the circumstances.
I think Mitch, it's going to be helpful if, uh, I know if I had, the whole housing board had the information ahead of time as to what, who are we, how many are we talking about that are maybe at the end of their time that we need to look at? Only because we just, you know, a lot of them are already there, 10 years, nine to 10 years. And, um, I said, I, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough topic.
Well, I, I appreciate that it may be a tough conversation, but I, I don't see an alternative. I don't think, you know, at this point in time, how can you tell somebody you need to go out and look for another place to live when no landlords are going to be showing property? You know, no real estate agents are going to be showing properties for sale. Um, I think, I think we have to suspend that, that timeline, that clock running until this is done. If you want to do it on a, you know, 30 days at a time or 60 or 90 days at a time basis, or just say, until the crisis is over, that's fine. But I, I don't think we can tell people, your time is up, you have to move out. Sorry. Doesn't really work. Uh, and on the other point, I, I didn't mean to suggest that we would, you know, change our process for allocating units. But my assumption is we still have a waitlist. Uh, you know, people can apply for housing if their situation has changed. They can add their names to the list and apply for it. And we have our standard procedure that we go through. There's no reason why we can't continue to go through that list and make those units available to those people who need them.
Well, certainly. Uh, Mitch, do you have on top of your head, how many are on the waiting list?
Uh, I do, and the list is extensive. We're probably at about 300 right now.
It's a tough situation, but I hear you. Okay.
Yeah, that, that's all the questions that I, that I had on, on, you know, COVID-19. Uh, thank you guys for providing your input and I'll definitely make sure, um, we address it at the meeting and we express your concerns. And I believe, I definitely believe, uh, with Mitch's guidance, we'll be able to, um, you know, find some type of solution. We're not sure at, at this time, I'm sure, uh, of whether it's a week, a month, a year or, or, or what it is. But I'm sure, uh, staff will work, uh, to give us some options, uh, come next week.
Yeah.
Uh, can I just chime in? Uh, uh, Maurice, I completely agree with you. And, you know, we're so concerned about people having housing. The last thing we want to do right now is create a situation where people do not have housing and don't have a viable alternative. That just doesn't, uh, that doesn't fit the model that we are, uh, trying to, uh, live up to at this point. So I'm sure you guys will use your best judgment there and make sure that people have enough time to find alternative housing.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to, just want to say, what happened last June was you pit the people that are living there against the people that are on the waiting list because they're having some of the same situations. So I can say, I can't say it enough times. It's a really tough conversation to have. Okay. Who's talking? No. Is it Mike or is it you?
I think it's Mitch.
Oh, it's Mitch?
I think we're trying to finish.
Not me.
Mike, are you coming back to finish what we're doing here?
Or Mike, maybe? I'm not sure.
I think it was Mike. I think he's off again.
He, he's muted.
Yeah, I think we've lost Mike.
It's that darn basement. He's in that basement.
Here he is back again.
There you are.
If you saw where I was really working, you'd be, it's, it's interesting. Um, well, I'll tell you later, but, um, yeah, working in a basement right now.
It's here.
So you hear the garbage disposal. It's, the garbage disposal is literally right over my head. And I said, don't run the dishwasher if you can help it tonight. This is the harder part. I want to get to this. The, um, because I know we've spent a lot of time tonight on this topic, but really helpful. Um, we, we're all going to have to and, um, all of us, uh, and it's
You're cutting out.
Hold. Then I'm get our best
Can't hear you. Dang.
Mike, you got bad, bad vocals.
You've already oh, okay. Um, better?
I don't know. We don't know.
Start talking and we'll see. Start talking and we'll see.
We expect continued disruptions. Read off the chart.
Oh, I think we've lost him again.
Well, we can read that. We expect continued disruption. Enrollment loss or enrollment gain. This is all depressing. You're supposed to know better than any of us how to do this, Mike.
Or Mike is getting frustrated over there. Look at him.
I know. Look at the red or oops, is he sending me the checks again?
Maybe Mitch can give the presentation.
Well, I think
Okay, he's, he's lost his, he sent me a text. I've lost, he sent me a text. Can, connected, dizziness. That's a word I've never used before. Anyway, he's lost his connection.
I think the presentation's
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we get it.
Yeah. I mean, just look in the red. We all need to prepare for Mitch.
So I think you get it. Um, yeah. So well, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm sorry. Quit while I'm ahead, but just know that we're all thinking about this. And we've got to start thinking forward and, um, we've got folks on it. It's going to be a rough year, I think, um, for, for everybody. Um, so anyway, um, I'll stop there because I don't know how much longer I'm going to have connectivity. Um, and that really kind of concludes our report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. It, uh, a lot of stuff going on and I know I support you and the team. They're doing a great job. Okay, we're down
Wait, 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 wait. Are we ready for board comments and discussions on this?
Well, I thought you talked all the way through. You still want to have discussions?
Oh, yeah. Well, yes. On the, on overview. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of our faculty, staff and administration for the hard work that you all put in since the middle of March. This is unprecedented, you know, as, as a district, we've been through earthquakes, we've been through floods, the, the fire shutdowns, the power shutdowns, but those were short-term events and lasted a few days. And then we got back to something resembling normal again. This is unprecedented and ongoing and, you know, everyone across the country is dealing with this, this crazy situation. And I'm just so impressed with how everyone on the team has stepped up. Uh, you know, everyone is doing their best to deal with uncharted waters and answers that aren't known. And the, really keeping the focus on trying to do the best thing we can for our institution, for our students, for the safety and health of our employees and our community. And it's just, it's incredible. I mean, I've spent a good portion of my career in the online learning business in dealing not only with corporations, with people like Harvard Business School and George Washington University and New York University and creating their online presences. And this is, these were projects that would take years to try and get curriculum converted to online learning. We asked our faculty to step in, oh, basically over a four-day weekend to convert their instructional material wholesale into online learning experience for our students. And I, you know, probably we're not going to win any awards for, uh, the most beautiful online courses in the world. But our faculty stepped up and they've made functional coursework here for our students so that they can continue their education. And, you know, we're working on alternatives for the hands-on classwork and things like that. And this is just very impressive, top to bottom. And I mean, in the other, uh, groups, we have, you know, our folks are Ask Me, folks, the blue shirts that work for Jose. I mean, these are people, it's not an exaggeration to say that they are risking their own personal health and safety by being out there in these buildings, cleaning, making sure things are safe, sterilizing the high-touch, high-contact areas. And doing this, you know, cheerfully without reservation. And people are stepping in to do everything they can. We have, you know, our ITS people that are making new technologies like Zoom and things work as best we can, given our connectivity issues here. But making sure that laptops are getting out into the hands of faculty, members and students. And again, I'm just so impressed that top to bottom in this organization, how people have stepped up and pitched in. And we're all going to get through this together and we will be able to say that we have survived this and it is going, it is unprecedented. We'll look back at 2020 and say, how did we ever manage to do that? But somehow we did, and we've all pulled together to make this happen. I just want to, again, just say thank you, thank you, and thank you. It was all my gratitude to everybody in this organization that has stepped in to try and make this happen. So that was, thank you, President Schwartz. That was the additional comment I wanted.
Absolutely. Any other comments from board members?
Yes. Um, all I can say is that I could not have said it more eloquently than my colleague, trustee Mandelkern. And I also add my thank yous as well. Thank you.
Agreed. Okay. Any other board members want to comment? Okay. Are you want to move on to the next topic? Which is 20 dash 3, 3C update on the SMCCD chancellor and skyline president searches. David Fune, are you with us?
I am. Can
Hi. You're going to give us an update?
Yes. So first I just want to say good evening, President Schwartz, members of the board, all the rest of you on the panelists and in the audience. I do want to say that Dr. Joan Smith, the search consultant with Community College Search Services is on the line. So she'll be able to add something to whatever I will be saying tonight and then, um, to be able to answer questions. So she is on the line. So what I want to do this evening is just real quick, a, a quick update on the chancellor's search update, on the chancellor's search. And then, uh, I would like to see, to have the board have a discussion on next steps on the chancellor's search. And then we can then go back to talking about the skyline search. So that's kind of how I'd like to frame it, uh, this evening. So as far as the chancellor's search, we concluded first level interviews on March 13th. Uh, we have three finalists for the board's consideration. Yesterday, we, uh, sent out a press release and internal announcement on the finalists. And we have updated the search page, the chancellor's search page, uh, with the finalist information. So that's kind of where we are at the moment. So obviously next steps, uh, would be, uh, forums and finalist interviews. And I kind of, I, I want to kind of get direction from the board as far as how you want to move forward with the understanding that we're in a new operating environment. We've been talking about this, um, for a while this evening. And everyone knows that, you know, that it would be, the forums and the finalist interviews would be online versus what we've, you know, done in the past, which is in-person interviews and in-person participation at the forum. So I just kind of want to throw that out there as we talk about next steps.
Thank you, David. Our member comments? Hello? Who wants to go first?
Okay, I'll go first. I think as, as we've had some, you know, previous conversations in closed session, none of us know how well trying to do a candidate forum on Zoom is going to work, but if we don't try it, we won't know. So I think we should proceed forward with the chancellor forums, trying to do it online and see what kind of participation we get. If we think it's adequate participation, great, we can move forward. If we hear a lot of responses from the community that they weren't able to, to attend or log on or whatever, or be able to ask their questions and so forth, and we kind of conclude that it wasn't effective, then we'll have to stop and regroup and figure out what plan B is and how we can move forward. But, uh, I, I don't think we should just stop and wait until things return to normal, because we have no idea when normal may actually
Yeah, I, I, since I'm sitting next to you, you know, if you realize that. Um, I would tend to agree with that. Uh, we, this is a new life, actually. We do, you don't know what, what norm, this is, might be it forever. Um, I would just say, I think that we need, we need, definitely need to do the forums. I think doing them in Zoom, um, like we're doing here, and I understand that they're videotaped and that they can be kept. I would certainly give the public ample time to be able to review them if they can't be there in public to at least hear the questions and see some of the responses, because that's what it's all about. So that would be my input. Um, trustee Oliver, do you, do you like to comment on this?
Uh, I agree. Um, I think we do need to go forward. Tonight is kind of a test or experiment of how well Zoom works. And I think we'll be doing some refinements. And, um, based on the participation on this board meeting, uh, you know, we had a lot of people participate. I'd be curious to get feedback from you know, we had a lot of people participate. I'd be curious to get feedback from them. If there's some way we can ask folks to let us know how it went, what could be done better. But at least I'm encouraged. It seems like we may have more people that tuned in tonight than would typically attend a board meeting. So I think the same will be true, probably even more so, when we have the public forums for the Chancellor candidates. It's such a central topic for us. So we need to go forward and then make it possible for people to watch a video archive version of those.
Yeah. I think we started out tonight with over 90 participants, and several chat comments came along with the way. We're down to 73. They might have got bored with the topic. I don't know. Children took over. Who knows? But I think, yeah, the numbers seem to be good. Trustee Norris, do you have a comment?
I would agree. I think that the plan that was laid out by Trustee Mandelkern and concurred with by Trustee Oliver is what we should do, and let's see where it goes.
Trustee Governor?
No comment, other than just, again, as other trustees have said, they definitely like to keep the forums on, and let's see where they go. Keep them archived for committee members to see them for a period of time and make sure that there is some spacing in between that. I'm not sure what that appropriate time might be, whether it's a week or two weeks for committee members to have access to the archived forum questions and answering process, and then ensure that the interviews will take place shortly thereafter.
Okay. David Fune, does this... Do you think this is...
I just want to say thank you for that feedback. That definitely will help. And I just... Joan Smith texted me that she's somehow on mute. I think she wanted to say something, but she's not able to. So I don't know if... Do we need to unmute her from our end?
She is. She's here, David.
They just unmuted me. Good evening, Trustee.
Good evening.
And I think that we will work real hard to get you good forums for both the Skyline and the Chancellor forums. What I need from the trustees is a date. Is there some date that you would prefer for the forums? And would you like the Chancellor forums to be first or the Skyline presidents to be first? The reference reports are done for the Skyline president, the Chancellor candidate, your finalist. The reference reports are being concluded, and I was told I should have them by the 30th or 31st. And as soon as I get them, I will forward them to David, and he will get them to all of you. But really, what I need from you is what you'd like to see first, president or chancellor, and dates that would work for you.
Trustee, any trustees want to comment on that question?
Sure, why not? I feel like Paul Lind in the middle of the Hollywood Squares here.
Well, you're not. You're on the corner.
I'm on the top now. Who was that? Artie Shaw or somebody. But anyway.
Damon's in the middle.
Yeah, nobody under 45 has any idea what we're talking about. Anyway.
It was fun.
Yes, it was fun. I think I would prefer, at least, to have the Chancellor forums done first because I think we want ideally to have the Chancellor be the selecte appointee nominee, whatever we want to call the final person in this process, to be able to weigh in and have input into the Skyline president search process. So it would seem to make sense to have that order, that the Chancellor's forum goes first, then the Skyline forums can go after that. I suspect we're all around and don't have a whole lot going on, other than other Zoom meetings these days. So my calendar is pretty free for the next few weeks. So I think as soon as we can get them scheduled, let's go for it.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yes. That helps a lot. I'll work with David, and we'll get something scheduled and have Cirillo send dates and times to you in a calendar. Thank you very much.
Question of...
Trustee Oliver, go ahead.
So how long do you think each forum should be? And do we have them separately? I mean, I would imagine hours after, you know, hours of sitting through forums could get kind of mind-numbing and maybe not fair to the candidates. So we're talking about three separate events at different times?
Correct. And they're usually 15 minutes to an hour. And questions will come in, but I'll work with David. We'll get it scheduled, and we'll send it out and have you look at it. But yeah, we wouldn't do one 9, 10, and 11 because I think that would get a little mind-numbing to the public. Although if they're recorded, then we could, you know, post where they are online, and the videos could be viewed whenever. But I'll work that out with David and the technology at San Mateo District.
So John, how do you deal with the questions? I mean, you have to put the questions out first and receive them?
So this is David. Just real quick, let me talk about the sort of how we've done the last forums and what we were planning on doing with the Skyline presidential forums. Unfortunately, as we were actually planning those forums on Monday, it's when we received the... There was the shelter-in-place order that was issued, and then it was determined that we would postpone the forums. So that's why they haven't happened. They were supposed to... They were scheduled for March 17th, 18th, and 19th. So, you know, in a way, and as Trustee Mandelkern indicated, that, you know, I would say having the Chancellor forums first and then having the Skyline presidential ones would make most sense in this case. So, you know, for whatever reason, this is happening now, and this is what we have to work with. But as far as the forums go, what we were planning on doing, and as Joan said, they're about an hour. They tend to be about an hour. And what we tend to do is, you know, we would have a few predetermined questions that the moderators would ask the finalists, and then we open it up to a chat. Just like this, like here we have here, we have the chat functionality with Zoom, and we would have an individual who would be responsible for reading sort of questions that would be coming through, relaying those to the moderator, and then the moderator would ask the questions to the finalists. So I think we would have a process in place that would work.
Okay. Other questions for David or John?
Trustee Schwartz, this is Jeanette Jackson from Skyline, the interim president. Could I make the comment?
Absolutely, Jeanette.
So as David indicated, and I know Joan has probably done this before, we almost had a dress rehearsal of how we were going to conduct our forums. As David indicated, they were over a three-day period. We had five candidates, two candidates on one day, one candidate on a Wednesday, and then the other two candidates on a Thursday. So I concur with the recommendation that we move forward with alacrity. I have... I was hopeful that we would be able to schedule something by mid-April for the Skyline presidents, and based upon what Joan has indicated, their background and reference text for the Chancellor would be done. So I would just hope... Skyline has really been leaning forward on trying to get the best candidate for our new president. And so there is some concern that I need to voice that if we put it off much later, there is a possibility that our top candidates might take positions elsewhere. So I would just urge, if we can move with alacrity and look at completing the process with both the Chancellor's selection and the college's selection by the middle of April, I would appreciate that, and I think our faculty would be okay and feel that their voices are heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Other comments or questions?
I think President Jackson has the word of the evening, alacrity. I like that. I think we should definitely move forward with alacrity.
Keep your sense of humor. That's all. Okay. Anything else? David, you have your marching orders?
We do, and then as Joan indicated, we'll put a plan together, and that will be sent to the board, and we'll go from there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Statements from board members? Any statements? Trustee Mandelkern?
Oh, sure. Thank you for letting me lead. I just want to say thank you again to everyone for all the hard work and effort in these unprecedented, unforeseeable, unplannable, whatever you want to pick on this time. So thank you again all very much. I as well encourage everyone to continue to be safe, continue to practice our social distancing and our self-isolation and shelter in place. And somehow, we will all make this through. And I think from the conversations this evening, I hope everyone that's been in attendance has seen the intention of this board is to make sure that we do the best we can to provide for and protect our students, our faculty, our staff, everyone in the San Mateo County Community College District family, that we are all in this together, and we are trying to make this as soft a landing as possible for everybody and provide as much support as possible to the extent that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mandelkern. Trustee Oliver?
Well, first, I want to thank the folks who put together the technical capacity to have this meeting. I think it worked out well. I'd be interested in getting feedback from other folks who have been participating, so we can refine it, but it seems like it went well. And, you know, this is a very difficult time for the world. I'm proud of what our district is doing, our leadership, our employees, our students. Everyone is stepping up to the plate to help everyone else make it through the time. And maybe it's a bit of a Pollyanna attitude, but I do think it took a while as a nation. But I think this is really bringing out the best in people in all institutions, government and private industry, and just how people are working through this. And I hope there will be a memory of how we pulled together, and we got to try to do it even when we go back to business as normal.
Great. Agreed. Trustee Norris?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues. The work that's been done by everyone from top to bottom has been exemplary up till now, and it looks like at least we have a plan going forward as best as we can, and we're prepared to adjust as we need to. And I also am optimistic about where we're going. And at the end of the day, we will have moved forward in technology, if nothing else, and be able to deliver even a better product to our constituencies and the communities and to all of our students. So thank you for everyone's continued good efforts. And we will be doing our part as well.
Thank you. Trustee Goodman? I can't hear you. You have to unmute.
Yeah, sorry.
There we go.
It was good, though, even though we didn't hear it.
Wasn't it good? Was it good?
It was really good. No.
Thank you, President Schwartz, for conducting your first online board meeting, and also to Chancellor Claire, our president, and ultimately our faculty and staff that have... You guys have done so much work, and it's tremendous, the work and the expertise that has been utilized in supporting our students. And then lastly, our students, last but not least, our students, you know, for being resilient. And obviously, we're not through the storm yet. I know we'll get through it because everyone on this call and everyone that we're representing has answered the call, and so I definitely commend us all in doing that. But I also like to make sure that we continue to remember those students that we were advocating for a few years back, last year, a few months back, when we talk about housing, food insecurity, income inequality, and that those students are still there. Their needs are... Still warrant our attention, and we need to make sure that that's the lens we continue to look through as we continue this great work on behalf of those students and all the other students within our district. I know we'll get through this, but it's going to be because of all of the hard work and the care that we do our work. And so I'd just like to thank everyone on this call and let us just continue to recommit ourselves to focus on all of our students, our undocumented students, ensuring that those protections are there for them now more than ever as we continue to address this issue.
Kaylin?
Hi. Just wanted to say thank you for your support and effort during this difficult time.
You're very welcome. I just... I want to thank Alexis and Damon and Cirillo. I mean, they were so helpful to all of us getting, being able to do this for the first time and working with Chancellor Claire, knowing every day has been a challenge. This district has stepped up and answered it and moved forward. And being on some of the county calls, our district is really leading the way in a lot of places, especially in education, of how we've got out ahead and helping our students. And yes, there's all kinds of mountains, but we keep going up and climbing over them. So have to keep good thoughts. I'm just curious as to... There's a couple people that asked questions, and then there was a couple people that chatted. There's a list of questions and whatnot. Will somebody get back to them on that? Or I think we tried to keep it up as we went along, but I don't know if we did a good job of that?
I can try to answer that, if that's okay. First of all, to the folks that zoomed in, I guess that's a verb now. I'm not sure. I'm learning too. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the questions. And definitely, I believe Alexis, I know he's muted, but I think we have a transcript.
Okay.
There's probably a lot of good ideas, too, that, you know, there's... We like to say none of us is as smart as all of us, and so we'll be looking at those. And if there's some good advice in there, we'll, you know, we'll take it.
Very good. I appreciate all the patience that everybody has to be getting through tonight. We still have 59 people that are out there in the public listening to us, so thank you for being there and all of our other folks that are listening. We're going to have a study session on April the 7th, and again, conducted via Zoom. So I will be talking to you all again then, if not before. So the meeting is now adjourned. We can leave the meeting. Good night. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks. Thanks to everybody.